Testing one, two. Testing one, two.
All right, let's go ahead and get started tonight. It is six thirty. We do have a quorum present. All members of the Planning Commission are present tonight. As always, since this is recorded, remember when you are speaking, please make sure that your microphones are on. We do need to adopt the agenda. Do we have any changes or additions that we need to make?
Move to adopt the agenda as presented.
Second. Most have been made and seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? None opposed, okay. Agenda is adopted. As always, we try to start out, not specifically related to a case, but any general public comment and anybody has something they want to bring before the Planning Commission. Okay, thank you. We have adoption of the minutes from the July the second meeting. Take a quick glance through those.
Since I was absent, I'll abstain from that vote.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion, we accept it.
I have an addition, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, Jim.
On the very last page, the last entries, I don't know if it was before Commissioner Elliott or immediately after Commissioner Elliott, but I would like inserted, you can check the record to see, "Smith observed that by excluding the public, the Planning Commission, and the Board of Supervisors from the process, and thereby eliminating the ability to receive proffers for cost of the development, SB nine seventy-four effectively raises taxes, as citizens and not developers must fit the bill for the unreimbursed costs."
Okay, thank you, Jim. All right, any other corrections or additions?
Make a motion to approve as submitted.
With the correction.
With the correction.
Yes. Motion has been made to approve the minutes.
Second. Second.
Yeah, gentlemen, if you would just lean into your microphones a little bit. We're a crowded room tonight. Thank you.
My mic is on. This is not normally a problem, so I'm not sure what's going on.
We're working on a solution.
Okay, thank you. That being the case, I'll just speak in my normal voice. So we have the motion to approve the minutes as corrected and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. And a extension from, yeah, Nathan. All right, our first case for tonight is case number SU dash zero seven dash twenty-five dash zero one, Ada Allemu. Multiple short-term rentals. This is the first workshop on this. Ada Allemu has submitted an application for multiple short-term rentals in accordance with Madison County zoning ordinance, Article four dash two dash one and three dash one dash twenty-two. The subject parcel is identified as Madison County Tax Map thirty dash five C. The parcel is fifteen acres and is zoned A1. Alan, anything addition to add there?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
As we go through this, we will explain that that's... Mr. Nichols, would you?
This particular parcel is located in Banco and the applicant has submitted an application for multiple short-term rentals. What they have proposed is to take this parcel and install decks and then put these dome-type structures, they're like tents, on top of them to utilize for their overnight occupancy. They do have permits in place now for the decks, although they've not been finalized yet, so that process is underway. They're just observation decks at this point. There is an existing house on the parcel now that is finished and currently serves as a short-term rental. There is also a house that, let me see here, I've got the building officials' comments that I received after the packet was submitted. Let's put this up here and we will break this down. So, oh, thank you. So the partially completed house did have a permit pulled for it, but it was never finished. The permit has expired. It could be finished in the future at some time. It's not subject to this application, although you may choose to recommend tailoring a permit in such a way that should the applicant ever finish the project and obtain a certificate of occupancy, that that be allowed to be included as one of the short-term rentals as well. So food for thought there. We've asked VDOT for comments. They are in your packet, I believe. And so VDOT asked for a little bit more information on the entrance. We're going to work on that. And the Health Department has not yet given me comments. There is a nice narrative and good explanation of the project that the applicant's engineer has assembled, who is with us tonight to answer questions that you may have. So that's where we are at this time, sir.
Thank you, sir. Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Nichols at this point? Did the applicants live on the premises now?
No, sir.
And each of these units are going to have their own private septic, because I noticed that they were tiered up and down. Are they going to be pumped to another site?
I think that that's a great question for the engineer on that one, what they can and can't do.
Mr. Nichols, I know in PDRC we discussed the easement issue. Do you know if anything was addressed on that easement being exclusive?
So the deed that contains the easement is in the packet. I didn't see any problems with what's there. I do not know if the applicant has yet approached the neighbor about their plans to expand, but I didn't see any language in the easement that is prohibitive of this use. It was pretty much limited to, you know, don't obstruct the operations of the former mill.
This is basically just some glamping, right?
Essentially, yes.
And if I, following up on one of Mike's points, the existing occupied dwelling is also being used as short-term rental. Is that correct?
Correct.
Any further questions for Mr. Nichols? Is, well, is the applicant here or she have the...
Yes, the representative of the applicant is here, yes.
Representative of the applicant.
Yep, yeah, very good. So I spoke to your engineer earlier.
Okay. I guess if you would both come to identify yourselves at the mic there and see if we have any additional information.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Justin Schimpf with Schimpf Engineering, Principal Engineer at the company in Charlotte. I've been in Madison for a little while, but it's nice to be here again. How do you introduce yourself?
I'm Ada Allemu. I'm the applicant.
Julie is. Julie is a landscape designer in my firm who's done the concept plans for this. I think you've got a pretty thorough description of what this is. It is a very simple, small project called Platforms with some lamping sites on it. And I think you've seen the overview. There would just be one septic serving both of these. It's sort of like a, almost like a one-bedroom-per-dome situation, so it's specif- like a two-bedroom unit in separate structure. So a normal single-family house is a four-bedroom drain field, so it's about half of that essentially. So, and I believe you have filed a permit already for that, right? So they're working with the Health Department to file a permit for that use. And the other update I would share is that we are, our surveyor is working on a entrance profile for VDOT. They asked for that as part of their permit conditions. So that's in process and should be done within a few weeks. So that was another agency item we were working on. And otherwise, I think it's a pretty small footprint project. One of the things I always warn folks is that I was concerned about traffic, these sort of projects, but compared to a normal single-family home, these occupy or have quite a small amount of traffic. If you look at the IT trip generation, the body that kind of gives you your traffic modeling for these sort of projects for large ones typically, three lamping sites are short-term rentals. It's about the same traffic as one single-family house on an average day. Obviously, the occupancy is not the same and they're much smaller scale. So just something to consider to think about a project of this size. It's really about the traffic of one single-family house as well. The only thing I wanted to add, we're happy to answer any questions that you all have for us.
Okay, thank you. Questions for...
Yeah, I've got a question. Is there any intention of expanding this once the three is done?
Well, I think if I heard correctly, the permit, there's one structure that could still be finished and so added on. I should have to answer that. We'd have to come back here, obviously, for another permit if there was opposed expansion beyond this meeting.
I understand that.
Yeah.
At some point eventually, we do plan on finishing the started house and we would go through the right channels to do the permitting. At this point, we don't have any plans of doing that and we don't know when exactly we would do that. But for now, it's the one short-term rental we have and then the two additional domes.
So as far as the, once again, on the septic, maybe y'all can answer this. I've heard you made a comment about it. But it looks like they're pretty far down the slope. Looks like a pretty, looking at the ISO bars, they're pretty down. They're going to be pumped back up to the main.
There'd be a new septic for the domes themselves.
It could be what?
A new septic permit. It should be a standalone drain field. It'll be its own drain field, smaller, for just those two.
So they have their own septic?
Their own, separate from the house, yes, sir.
And water?
The well, you're sure the well?
Yeah.
The well will be shared.
Have you had a soil scientist looking at this location to see if it is suitable for a septic system?
Yes, we have. We've done our soil report. We've submitted that since the last meeting to the Health Department and submitted an application.
Okay, so you're basically waiting on Department of Health, just like you're waiting on VDOT for the other information. Other questions for the applicant?
I think we discussed earlier at the PDRC, the abandoned house, again, safety's concerns came up with guests potentially, you know, walking through there, approaching it. Have you come up with a mediation plan to keep guests from accessing the abandoned home?
Yeah, so we currently have windows and doors on that, so we'll just have to make sure we keep it locked.
So there have been improvements since the last time with windows and doors, or that was the condition it was in?
That was the condition. It had the doors before.
Okay. Any further questions? Perhaps not directly related to your application, but if I understand, that unfinished house has been sitting abandoned for quite some time and you're considering spending enough money to do that house? Have you had a building inspector or some kind of building official look at it to see what kind of condition it's in?
So we, when we purchased the property, the house was already there. We don't have, we haven't done anything since then. We just actually added a little bit of like Tyvek to make sure that the interior, what was there, doesn't get further messed up by moisture. But we don't currently have any plans on when we will finish it and what exactly we will do with it.
Okay. More as a cautionary thing, a house that's been abandoned that long, it could be very problematic to restart that building permit and build that house.
Yeah, and that's why we haven't invested the time to work on that or the finances to work on that at this moment. But I do think since it's there, it is something we'll look into in the future.
So at this point, your special use application is specifically just for the two additional short-term rentals?
Yes.
And you have no intention of putting that fourth one? That would give you three on the property and right now you don't intend to look at the fourth one?
Not at this moment. Not in the next couple of years at least.
Okay, so for this purposes of this special use permit, it will be a total of three short-term rentals when you finish?
Yes.
Thank you.
I have one question. What do you anticipate the life of the covering for the geodesic domes being?
How long they typically last?
Yes.
I believe they should last at least ten years with the right maintenance.
Okay, thank you. Okay, any further questions for the applicant? All right, thank you. And the information in the packet, especially what your engineer prepared, is very well done. We like to see that. Thank you. All right, thank you. At this point, we always have a chance for public comment. And as always, we try to limit, well, not to limit, but to allow three minutes or so so that everyone who has a, who wants to make a public comment will have a chance to. Is there any public comment on this particular case?
Mr. Chairman, just a comment from IT.
Yes.
If members are not speaking, can they please turn their microphones off? We'll get feedback if they're all on, all up there at the same time.
Ah, okay.
If you hear the screeching up there, that means we've got more than one microphone and the other one's picking it up.
Okay, so we have to play musical microphones, okay. Any public comment on this case? And this is the first workshop on this case. So we will be seeing in August, at the third Wednesday in August, we'll have the second workshop on this. All right, thank you. Do we have any comments online? Okay, thanks. Next case is case number SU dash zero six dash zero one dash twenty-five, Poly of the Blue Ridge, special use permit. This is the second workshop on this. Ann Gore has submitted an application on behalf of Rebecca Gore for a special use permit to operate a primitive campground in accordance with Madison County zoning ordinance fifteen dash A on the parcel identified as Madison County Tax Map fifty-six dash seven A. The subject parcel is one hundred eighteen point two seven three acres and is zoned A1. Mr. Nichols, anything to add there?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Just a follow-up from our previous meetings on this case. During preliminary development, John Wynn stated that there was not enough of a trip change on this one to warrant any comment from VDOT. We did ask for comment from the Health Department to clarify their position on waste management for these projects. There is an email from Emily Borden that's in your packet that gives a handful of options that the applicant can use to satisfy wastewater requirements. She can choose any of those options that the Health Department has presented, if she sees fits, but she'll have to choose one. And otherwise, this is a fairly uncomplicated case. We've got a primitive campground of essentially one.
Okay, any questions for Mr. Nichols? And of course, this is the second workshop, so we've been through some of these questions already. Any questions for Mr. Nichols? Okay, that being the case, any questions for Ms. Gore?
Mr. Chairman, I just have one question. And I guess I could go to Alan, but what's the agricultural... Agricultural, you know? Yeah, creating the land use. Creating the land use for this parcel, activity.
I do not know. That program is administered by the Commissioner of Revenue?
Certainly is.
Quite sure our applicant can tell you.
Actually, hi.
Hello.
Hi, everyone. I'm Ann Gore. Actually, I talked to Brian just to make sure that we retain the property in agricultural use. That above all things is most important to me and my family, especially my mother, who's the landowner. So I would really like to stress that if this little camper has anything that raises concerns about the change of agricultural use, that would not be something I would want to move forward with. I will say that the camper is right next to already created buildings, already established buildings, to include a shed that my father built and the home that my father built. So it's not impeding on any of our agricultural or timber. So it's not impeding in any way in those agricultural or harvesting cultivation, any of those spaces. And Brian was in agreeance, or he actually gave me an agreement email saying that it would not impede on that A1.
So forestry is the agricultural?
Well, there's forestry in about eighteen acres and then the remainder a hundred acres is in cultivated agriculture, soybeans and corn that's leased through the lambs.
Gotcha. Okay, excellent. Thank you.
Yep, you bet.
So have you figured out which way you're going with the septic?
Yeah, for sure. So they gave me a list. I'm actually doing a rental of a porta potty through KNS here locally. So Kevin and his guys come and clean out the porta potty at least once a week. If I ask for another one, especially these hot days, they're happy to oblige and come and clean every couple of days if I need.
And your water?
Water, yes. I have an eleven-gallon holding tank that I have been having the sink water flow into and I come and I roll it into my walk-in shower and empty it there. And that seems to kind of satisfy the requirement, both on the Health Department side and some suggestions from Mr. Carpenter earlier. So thank you for that suggestion.
And we did talk last time about your electricity. I suggest maybe that little...
Yes, that's actually in the works.
Okay, good.
I have an electrician who's getting that set up for me. Thank you.
Very good. Any other questions for the applicant? All right, thank you. Do we have any public comment on this? Thank you. Appreciate it. Okay, our next case is case number SU dash zero six dash zero two dash twenty-five, Madison Hills Events. This is the second workshop. Molly Willshere has submitted an application for a special use permit for an event venue in accordance with Madison County zoning ordinance, Article fourteen dash eighteen. The proposed event venue will exist on three parcels, which are identified as Madison County Tax Map forty dash forty-three, forty dash forty-four, and forty dash forty-five. The total area of the three parcels is one hundred eighty-six point four seven six acres. All three parcels are zoned A1. Mr. Nichols, anything to add there?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Since our first workshop on this matter, we have some new information. The applicant has requested a few changes from our original discussion. The primary change would be the, a fall event. And my understanding is that there may not be any plans at this time for a fall event, but simply the option to have one for up to fourteen days annually. The applicant would like to make sure that weddings are permitted to be held on the property in addition to the seasonal events. And also to make sure that her special use permit would not exclude her from allowing other organizations or businesses at her pleasure from hosting their own events on the site, should they see fit. The information in the packet is, beyond that, is very similar to what we saw the first go-around. And there is a draft permit in your packet as well for you to review with some proposed conditions that are probably worth some discussion. We've gotten VDOT's commentary back, which was essentially, we'll see what a site plan reveals and go from there. I did press them for some more consideration. John Wynn paid me a visit and came up and looked at the entrance. Some important context to consider, that road was never designed to any particular standard. It was a cal path that became a buggy path that was picked up in the nineteen, or became a county road and then in the nineteen thirties picked up to become a state road. And so it's just been improved over time, but was never designed. But for the best anyone can figure, if it were to be built by the road manual today, given its width, speed limit, and rolling topography, it would have a capacity of about two thousand trips per day. The current utilization is estimated to be about eleven hundred trips per day, so it's operating at about fifty-five percent capacity. Also important to note that we don't have the information to know when that, what time of day or over what period of time that traffic count was taken and extrapolated, but that's the best data that we have at the moment. So John's comments to me were, it would make VDOT feel better that if, when we get to the traffic or when we get to the site plan phase of development, which will be required if the special use permit were to be approved, VDOT would like to see a traffic impact analysis submission to go along with their site plan. The requirements of that would extend beyond just the entrance and would be an analysis of the neighboring intersections and those things to see what the overall traffic impact would be as a part of that submission. So in the draft permit that's in front of you, I did include a traffic impact analysis as one of the provisions to go with a future site plan submittal, should we get to that point. Other things to consider, we had a meeting with Gavin Helm, the EMS Deputy Chief, on the project and he seemed satisfied with the plans that are in place for emergency management. There's no weight-restricted bridges. The access is wide enough. Plan for future development of roads through there allows for adequate access for emergency vehicles. So he was satisfied with the emergency management portion of the plan. Comment, let's see, comments from the Health Department are in your packet. There's a, the Commissioner of Revenue letter that we spoke about at the last workshop I did include for you to look at that anticipates if a certain level of a revenue is achieved, like, so for every million dollars of revenue, these are the taxes that apply. Those documents are in there for your... Those documents are in there for your review. Letter from Economic, Economic Development and Tourism. So Tracy Gardner sent a, a letter describing the impact there to the, to the county that you should definitely read and consider. Other new documents that have come since the last time that we got together, bear with me a second and we'll pull it up here. The applicant was kind enough to prepare some illustrations that I'm quite sure that she'll want to talk about, about a sound analysis that was conducted to see how the sound would travel and at what level it would be when it got to neighboring properties. That information's in there we'll review, as well as the, the requested entrance plan and trip count analysis. So something else will come to me, but I think that's the, the nuts and bolts of, of what we've developed since the last workshop.
Okay, thank you, Alan. Any questions for Mr. Nichols?
I have a question, Alan. I, I thought I read on here there was one entrance in and one entrance out. Has VDOT looked at what will be both entrance?
So on the screen now, let's see, is the concept, and so while I did speak to John about what that concept is, they typically reserve comment until they actually see the site plan. So we can talk in generalities about it, but, you know, they will certainly review whatever concept is presented and designed on the site plan and, and give their opinions at that time.
I've got one question for you two, Alan, in regards to the emergency response. Was the pelipad a positive, negative, indifferent part of that consideration?
I think that any time that you have the ability to get people to medical care faster, if necessary, I would see that as a net benefit.
I mean, it seems like they just kind of land where they need to land, you know, too. You know, so I didn't know if having a dedicated-
I'm not an emergency services expert. When we spoke to Mr. Helm on the subject, he seemed excited to have another option for, for safe landing in inclement weather that is easier to accomplish than just an open field.
Yeah.
But the applicant is more informed on the matter than I am, so I would encourage you to put that question to her.
That answers my question. I appreciate it.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I have a question, if it's not out of order, if I'd like to ask Mr. Jackson. Clay, one of my concerns is you travel Fishback Road coming off of Oak Park Road, there's a little group of houses there, there's five or six houses. Once you pass those five, six houses, that's a thirty-five mile an hour zone. My understanding is if it's not posted anything else, it becomes fifty-five. Fishback Road at fifty-five miles an hour, then you get up there, you've got another little group of houses, and then you've got another subdivision. Is that something the board can request for VDOT to lower that speed limit?
Certainly.
Okay, thank you.
If I may, Mr. Chairman. The Board of Supervisors asked VDOT to look at that stretch of road. As you may recall, there's a existing commercial entrance that's going on across from the Presbyterian Church. There was question of site distance and all that. VDOT was made that request. The request was to see if they considered thirty-five to match the other side of Oak Park. I believe what they came back with was recommended forty-five, but I don't believe they posted that yet. So you are correct, until they do, sir, it's assumed fifty-five.
Okay. All right, any further questions for, you have public comment in a few minutes, please, ma'am. Any further questions?
Alan, do you know if this is gonna, what this is gonna do to the land use there? I mean, this is gonna be pretty much an income producing-
I did ask the Commissioner of Revenue what his plans were, and he would have to see what comes to fruition ultimately. But it is quite likely that a significant chunk of the property will have to come out of land use. It may be limited to the eighteen acres in use. It may be more. He administers that program, and I think it will depend on the site plan that comes in front of us. And, you know, as most of us know that have land and do projects, that when you build something, often a section has to come out of land use as you get permits and build over time. So I'm sure that phasing will have something to do with how quickly something would come out of land use.
Okay, any further?
I have another question for Alan. Alan, this, this land is zoned A one now, and if a special use permit is given, it'll be zoned A one with a special use permit. So does it taxes because a business is operating there? Does the taxes on that property change to a higher level of taxes instead of just the A one?
I mean, the fact that a business would be operating there will most certainly impact the taxes that are received by the county in the area that is subject to commercial operat- I want to caveat this statement by saying that the Commissioner of Revenue administers the land use program. I do not.
I understand.
But the-
Land use part.
I know you do. Everyone here's listening. So, you know, as my suspicion is that as areas are developed for commercial use, that those areas will come out of the land use program and will result in a net increase in real estate taxes. Certainly, as the business operates there, the personal property, you know, will be subject to the tools, machinery taxes, and all the other ones that apply. There is a, a great list from the Commissioner of Revenue in your packet that lays out very clearly all the taxes that will apply to this project sure, should the, should it be approved. You know, the real estate taxes would go up. Brian gave an example of the, example, you know, of the rollback fees that would be involved, as well as a one percent local sales tax revenue, a four percent food and beverage tax, lodging, all the things that he anticipates and that he submitted in your, your packet. So would, if, at page fifty-three of the PDF there. So if, you know, if you're asking if it's an approved, will the taxes go up? Yes.
Ma'am, if, if you would, we will have public comment very shortly. This is not a question and answer session. We'll have public comment shortly. Thank you.
You know, this is why I asked that question, Alan. One of the concerns I got is we keep giving special use permits, when we rezone them to the special use permits, I think we would collect a lot of the taxes.
I think that at some point, the planning commission decided that an event venue was an appropriate area for special use in A one and C one zoning districts. This happens to be an A one zoning district, so that would be an ordinance amendment.
Thank you. Any other?
Yes.
I sure do. In, in looking at this application, I think it's really an exciting proposal that's come before us. And the public comments have been pretty much across the board, from those that are fact-based and have experience with the applicant in Pennsylvania, as well as local citizens, both in favor and against it. And the against are generally the NIMBYs, which we always see, not in my backyard, the bananas, build absolutely nothing anywhere near anything.
All right. Courteous, please, courteous.
Decisions against virtually everything, but the issue is here of what she's currently zoned to do. And my research of the state code, our code, and some special legislation concerning use valuation of a hundred eighty-six acres, one hundred sixty-four tax use valuations, forestry, twenty-one is ag. So by right, she can have livestock, dairy, poultry, agriculture, the production under Code of Virginia and the administrative codes. She could have twenty-one sheep and then goer goats and cattle. And if she decides to make cheese, she can do that, and she can have an accessory building to do the cheese. And if she decides that maybe she wants to shear these goats and card the wool and dye the wool and spin it and weave it, she could do that and have an accessory building by right. If she wanted to have eggs, she could do that. She could have all kinds of poultry running around. If she had draft horses and to pull a plow and the agricultural portion of her, or in the row crop portion of her use valuation, she could certainly do that. If she wanted to have a blacksmith to repair the equipment, she could do that and have a forge and accessory building by right. If she wanted to do her own wooden implements and she could get a bodger in to do the bodgering and use the forest for saleable products, and she could erect ancillary buildings to do that. She could have hogs and just go from the squeal to the meal on the property, convert everything to agriculture, and she could have hundreds of hogs running around by right. And if she wanted to share the experience with the general public, she could do so through agritourism, which the state of Virginia encourages. We encourage through our comprehensive plan that was citizen adopted through our economic development plan, which citizens had opportunity to speak on. I think our comp plan has over nine different sections that suggest that agritourism is certainly a bright future for the county. So a lot of these things could be done by right with just a little bit of tweaking to what the applicant has proposed. And the Right to Farm Act, by the way, suggests that she can have, do that without interference and certainly without nuisance lawsuits. They're prohibited. So I think that we should consider that. Tourism, agritourism has brought two hundred twenty thousand jobs to the Commonwealth, two point two billion dollars in revenues. It's a major fundraiser, a targeted fundraiser for the county so that we can avoid the doubling of our property taxes, which are on the horizon. So this is an activity that could certainly help and support the other agritourisms that we have with the wineries, cideries, breweries in the county, as well as graves operation. I mean, those are targeted tourism that bring a lot of agritourism, bring a lot of tourism and dollars to the county. So I think that with minor tweaks, that's certainly an option that we need to consider when we're considering the entirety of, of this proposal.
All right, thank you, Jim. Any other questions for Mr. Nichols at this point?
I do. Alan, do you know if there's gonna be any kind of, the new roads are gonna be put in there, the two new roads and the existing roads? Are they gonna be held to a certain standard?
They will be held to a very specific standard, as I'm quite sure that you're-
And they're still private roads.
You're aware. So, but the earth disturbance is going to be greater than an acre, which is why it will require a site plan in the submission to DEQ for approval to make sure we have all the stormwater management and erudite, and erosion and sediment control measures in place as a part of this. So that will be a part of the site plan.
Actual construction of them.
I'm sorry, Mr. Snyder, I could not hear you.
I'm, I was talking about in the general construction of them.
What specifically about the general construction?
They just go in and just put a road in there, or they can be held to a certain standard of, of the road?
You're gonna have to build a road that meets the standards that are acceptable by, you know, by DEQ. It's a commercial activity there, so you can't just, you know, push your bulldozer through and build a farm track there. It's gonna have to be a properly designed road.
I'm asking that because it's a private road.
Yes, we're gonna require that because of the level of disturbance and that it's commercial activity.
I got a, I had another question. I, I'm looking here at, at the things that are proposed in a number of days or number of weeks that these events are gonna take place and gonna be used. And I see number eight there, weddings are planned. Well, there's no number attached to that. She could have a big wedding every weekend.
She could.
Any further questions for Mr. Nichols? Yes?
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Nichols, this could also be a good question for Mr. Wright. Is there any concern with the special use, proposed special use permit possibly running with the land and the different activities specified, and then they're being in three parcels? Like, would she be able to sell one individual parcel, and how would that work?
The special use permit will be attached to all three parcels. So if she were to sell an individual parcel, I think that my, it seems unlikely the way it is now, the, the way that they are structured, because all of the parcels are required for the operation of the event venue based on the, based on the concept.
Agreed, yeah.
So I, I think that that would be unlikely. But it would definitely transfer, you know, with the land, as most special use permits do, and is the default position of a special use permit. So if the applicant develops a viable business that is successful and chooses to sell it, you know, that's operating, it doesn't change the terms of the special use permit, it simply has different ownership.
And Mr. Callen, I have the exact same question. And so for the draft versions of the special use conditions, which is, what page is this on the packet?
Forty-six. Forty-six.
Forty-six. Number two tries to address that. I'm perfectly open to changing that language.
Okay, yep. Thank you.
All right, any further questions for Alan at this point?
This is not so much of a question, is more of a, a comment that, so we have another landowner that uses the same ingress egress. Are there any provisions for this particular landowner to have a maintenance agreement or anything that gives him particular access to and from his property?
The county is going to decline to make an opinion on this matter.
So, not to be too cryptic about it, Mr. Snyder, if you don't mind, Al.
Please.
But the easement is between, you know, the two landowners, right? Private citizens dealing with their property issue. So if we approve the special use permit, or, well, if we don't, then nothing changes. If we approve the special use permit, then we'd be approving it without making any impact or opinion on what happens between those two landowners and whatever easements they have between them. Does that answer your question?
Somewhat.
I mean, we could, we could, we could grant any number of things, right? I mean, I don't know, a NASCAR track on her property, and it might run over somebody's easement. Just because we've said, hey, yes, you can build that, doesn't mean that it's gonna be allowable between those two private entities, and that private entity, that private party could say, hey, this isn't okay because I've got a right of way here. No matter what the county said you could do, I've got separate property rights that I can stand on.
Just right, if I may, I'll make it deeper. If there's-
I have litigation going on.
Would that impact at all our vote in terms of the outcome of that litigation?
I don't think it would impact your vote. I think it would impact what the applicant is able to do or not do, regardless of how this gets voted.
So is it the east or a right of way?
Well, I don't own it. I'll, we've got an owner in the, in the gallery. I believe it's a right of way.
Okay, any further questions?
I'm looking at it.
Mr. Nichols?
It's here.
Or Mr. Wright?
Because I thought it was mentioned in here.
All right, if not, let's move to the applicant, and if you would again identify yourself, and we'll go from there.
Sure, I'm Molly Wilsher. Thank you all for, for meeting this evening, and thanks to everyone who came, what, no matter what your opinion is, I, I value your opinion as it affects everyone. And it has made me take into consideration other very good poignant things, particularly with noise and traffic and everything that was my initial concern with any project. Alan, could I ask you to scroll down to the decibel, that, that first one there? There we go. So we did, just to double-check everything, had a sound engineer come to the property who sets up very large concert series pieces, not that that's what would be going on there, just to be clear, but to get the proper decibels of anything that might ever happen. The typical sound levels there are, just for your reference, it's fifteen decibels is a, is a whisper, and it goes all the way out to a hundred and sixty-five decibels, which is a gunshot. So in the center there, at a hundred decibels, each ring represents a, you know, as we move out, how, how much sound is, is dissipated. Now, that ring and demonstration does not account for any baffling or, or hindrance in sound. So that's if I'm in a field that is perfectly flat on a clear day, that is what will happen, depending on how far you are. depending on how far you are away from the center point. If you could scroll down, please. This is a contour slice of the property and the closest house to the property on that side, which is 664 feet and nine inches away from the edge of any festival ground operation. That's to include service roads, fencing, anything of that nature. The festival grounds is sunk significantly down, which also helps with the baffling of sound. If you can imagine at that tiny tree there, the third from the right, if you go left, that one right there, if that was your 100 decibel, your amplified acoustic guitar, you would have it stop and be reverted back into the festival grounds much before it gets to any private citizen so as to not hinder the piece of Madison. If you could scroll down again for me, please. That's just the same where we contoured from, that's the closest property and the edge of the festival grounds. If you could scroll down again. This was the requested piece of the puzzle, so we are working with a traffic engineering firm that does large site plans, everything from bush gardens level style places all the way to wedding venues and even small private farms. I have a gentleman that has worked in Madison County before and with y'all, possibly not this board, but previously. And so proposed would be a 50-foot commercial entrance, so that would allow for, in just that snippet, in your yellow lane, which would be a smaller lane on the left-hand side, would have seven cars right in that entrance part and then 96 along that driveway before they even hit the parking area. So before they're parked, you'd have 96 individuals off of the road. The blue lane or a general lane, it would switch from in and out depending on your ingress and egress needs at the time of entry. And the capacity right there at that first little bit is 40 cars and then 84 along that road. And then your red lane, which would be really, your in or out, your opposite, which would be the least driven and also the more easement or EMS piece of the puzzle, that could hold six cars at capacity and then 89 on the driveway. So God forbid there's an accident or anything down Oak Park, we would be able to get anybody that would be for our purposes off the road within a matter of minutes.
May I ask Tim to ask one question?
Sure.
I noticed the, on that diagram back there, Alan, the out at 4:00 PM, when we talk about the holiday lighting fest...
Sure.
Is this specific to...
This would be more a general festival for the other...
A general festival?
Mm-hmm, if it's an all-day festival.
And so at night, different timing or is it, or is it going to be lesser traffic at the night events?
It would be, we still have the membership traffic timed plan, so if you've got a ticket for 8 to 8:10, that's your 10-minute time slot to come in. And we would only have a certain number of memberships within that to be able to control the traffic flow. It also, it interests the experience for the person in there because there's not long lines and that massive buildup. So that would be, we'd have two lanes in and one lane out, or two lanes out and one lane in at the predominant end. So for the light festival in particular, you'd have two lanes in, five to eight, and then two lanes out starting at the end time of 10:00 PM.
Okay, so 4:00 PM would be the, what you're going to reference as general events moving forward?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
And that's for which event, starting at four?
So it's starting at four and that's a general time of when people are predominantly heading out for the day. That would be for a spring or summer or fall festival. Anything that was going all day, not something that is just the 5 to 10:00 PM in the evening.
So the Frost Fest is kind of like on its own. Go ahead, because I see your traffic generation for the Renaissance thing here, but...
That's going to be your highest volume, so I didn't want to mislead with Frost Fest, which does have a shorter timeframe. This is, this is the worst it'll get, as it were.
Uh-huh. I did some calculations on this and it looks like if I did a total vehicular count, we're talking about 1,884 cars in one day. Does that sound right?
No.
Well, if you, if you go down and you, so I'm looking at your graph now.
Okay.
And looking at the graph, you do vehicles in, because I looked at this right much. So if you do your vehicles in, if you count all your ins, because...
I'm sorry, what numbers are you referencing? On this sheet, the graph, are you, can you scroll down?
That one right there.
Yeah.
That one right there. So starting at 6 o'clock, you've got two vehicles coming in. And each, you add your two plus two plus two and all throughout the day, all your vehicles in, without any of them going out, all the ends come up to 1,884 vehicles.
1,170.
I don't know how I'm off 700, but... Okay. 1,100 and what?
Seven.
Okay. All right. Other question for the applicant?
I think Mike's still working on it.
Yeah, I'm still working on it.
Still working on a question.
Well, so, and I'm doing a total number here, whether it's 1,100 or 1,800. We're going to multiply this by how many people? Is that going to be three people roughly kind of per vehicle, because I came up with?
I have no idea how many people with vehicles will come, honestly. There are events that they pack vehicles in because they pay for parking. Our business model goes off of a membership process for two reasons, one of which is control of, you knowing exactly who's on the property and when to limit things like any crime or anything, petty theft, things of that nature. And then it also allows a tax to be given to Madison County in lieu of ticket sales, which are not receiving tax revenue to Madison County. With that membership, we will only be selling 835 parking passes per day of operation because that is what's capacity on the property. This traffic...
I'm sorry, how many?
835. What's on the, 835 parking passes is the capacity of the property.
You've got, at this particular point, I believe I saw at 3, 3 o'clock, you're going to have 840 cars in there at that particular point.
The blue line is the on property, that's how many cars are there?
Uh-huh. Uh-huh. At 3 o'clock, you're going to have 840 cars there.
Between 835 and 840, we have to get exact measurements of everything's with the trees. So there's plus or minus 10 of cars depending on the size of vehicle.
But you're somewhere around 3 o'clock, you're going to have over 800 cars.
Right, at 835, if I have over...
Times three is up, if there were three, that's going to be about 2,500 people.
Correct, correct, yes.
At that particular time.
So there are 2,500 people, the capacity of the festival, for a comfortable festival would be no more than 3,500 people. In talking to the health department, that's more than, you have to have 50% empty space in any festival room. So that gives a 70% empty space in a festival. So it's not to capacity, it's not to what a fire marshal would allow us to have, but it is more to the comfort and experience of the customer.
Your purple line there says total on road. What road is that? Is that Oak Park Road?
Oak Park, not a...
Is that your private road? What road is that?
Oak Park, no. Oh, our driveway, I'm so sorry.
On your, one of your two ins or one of your two outs? Thank you. I know, I did that number a couple of times. Yes, thank you, Alan. So we, so we know who else is talking. If you would, go ahead and identify yourself right now.
Michael Bianco, I'm the partial owner with Molly on the property.
Okay, so...
And I did the spreadsheet and I'm sorry about that.
You're responsible for the counting, yeah, okay.
So your, so your account was for what, for the Frost Fest?
The Frost Fest Festival, which is significant.
Because we don't have a traffic analysis for that yet. We didn't get one in our packet anyway.
Yeah, this is for the Renaissance.
Okay.
This would be a representative sample.
I'm sorry.
A representative sample, an illustration that you could change the time slots and apply it to what have you. The chairman requested an illustration of what timed entry would look like in a way to understand, you know, how that works with people coming and going and the occupancy of cars. And so this illustration was there to present that.
And this is more of a presentation than an expected number of cars. It's here's the in and out, given the, the different driveways and the capacity of such in order to be able to get traffic on and off of Oak Park in case of emergency or need be.
Well, and my point is though, I mean, and I don't, I don't mind the Frost Fest, I don't mind any of this so much. I think it's probably a good idea for the county to have a Christmas show, that kind of thing. I don't, I don't mind that at all. But the traffic count, from what I see here, is a lot.
It could be a lot, absolutely. We are limited by things that...
Well, I mean, if you're projecting this, you're projecting and, I mean...
That's not, this is, again, it's a demonstration. Our, my, my sales will only be at 835 because that is the capacity of our festival.
Is that total for the day?
Total for the day.
So then these numbers are way off.
That is what could go in and off of the roads for traffic control, even if it's not my traffic.
So you're 1,000 off.
Off is not the term I would use. This is a demonstration of the numbers, how it would go in and out. So if we had the fishback homes built with those 400 extra homes and we have much more traffic in five or 10 years than, than we had accounted for even with our 800 guests, there would be an availability to, to allow emergency services through that road just by use of our driveways. And this says that that's, that's what it can take. So capacity is not where we would be, that is what it is capable of handling. Our event venue is capable of handling 835 vehicles on site and that's the, the number of membership parking passes that will be sold. Once that sells out, that's our, that's our sellout for cars on the property for many reasons. Membership in and out, just accessibility for all of our ticket people and people selling things. You don't want to overwhelm anyone.
So maybe it would look better if you changed your traffic count to allow just for the 840 people.
So I'm...
That might look better.
Sure. I have, again, working with a traffic engineer for the exact count, working with those particular intersections and with the scale of what it can hold, what VDOT requirements are and as well as what we will do.
So this is not what you're expecting? This is what it could handle?
That's what the roads could handle. That is not what I'm expecting or would allow for our business model.
Do you have one, a projected one for your business model?
I'm happy to give you one. I don't have one on me, but I'm happy to provide that, sure.
Okay.
Yeah.
That'd be nice to see what you're expecting, what we're going to be voting on.
Working with, sure.
And if I may just piggyback on the comment, Mr. Nichols, what was the VDOT capacity number on the highway as is today from our friends over at VDOT?
You're estimated to have about a 900 car capacity, like total capacity's 2,000, current utilization estimate at 1,100. So you could add 900 cars a day and be within the capacity in theory, but again, I'm going to hedge that on a... Yep, let's say, again, I'm going to hedge that statement on, this is why Mr. Winn requested as a part of a site plan that we do a traffic impact analysis where we could address those things more precisely. And of course, VDOT is not going to allow, you know, plans to be, you know, that are going to just totally blow out the capacity of the road. If VDOT were to get an application that says, hey, here's what I want to do, I'm doing a, you know, a low-volume commercial or a full commercial, whatever it is, and I'm going to have 1,000 cars a day going out of here, they're going to go, okay, well, you can do this, but then you need to do, you know, something else. You need to put in a turning lane, you need to do whatever the thing is to, you know, accommodate the capacity. And if you go, you know, if you're going to have 10, let's take the extreme example, and somebody wanting to do something on the property where they have 10,000 cars a day coming and going, VDOT's not going to tell them no, but what they are going to say is for us to approve this plan, you're going to have to now, you know, buy the rights to property and widen the road and everything to get to 29 if you want to do this. And if you can't accomplish that, then you can't do, you know, we're not going to approve your permit. So at the end of the day, whatever proposal is presented, VDOT has to approve the entrance and the roadway to accommodate this, which is why we are asking for the larger analysis of traffic studies so we make sure that the capacity there can accommodate it. If, and if it's not financially feasible to do road improvements, then the applicant can tailor their size of their, of their venue to say, well, we're only going to do 600 cars because that way it meets the capacity of the road and the entrances and the neighboring intersections and those things. And they know that that's the limit based on what's financially feasible, you know, for road improvement. So this is kind of going to work itself out in the site plan phase as the, as the applicant works with VDOT to accomplish this.
And I guess my final, probably more of a point, just to summarize what we've been discussing and probably for the slew of comments that are coming in. Threshold for VDOT's at 2,000 right now currently with the data we have, regardless of when the date and the, the study was done. Currently we're at 1,100, so we have a threshold of 900 before at 100% capacity based on the numbers. Is that math right?
Best data, yep.
Okay, thank you.
Just, just to go along with that, before we continue, I thank everybody for their patience and I would just encourage everybody just to treat people the way you want to be treated. I think everybody's going to have a chance to speak and so I'd encourage you to do that. Mrs. Wilshire, so as we're kind of on that road thing, and Alan, can we go back to that in-out sort of diagram? Perfect, thank you. So we were talking earlier and they were kind of directed us to you for that easement with your neighbor. From what I could tell, that seemed to be indicated, which would kind of be that red?
Yes. It would be the closest and the easiest Y and always the least amount of traffic usually used for emergency services if someone's dropping someone off for work. And then the other two being the in and out would be the predominant ones for real customer use.
Yeah. So, and when, so when I looked at this initially, and I did hear what you said about, you know, like maybe two in for peak in times, two in and out, you know, and the different uses of that, when I was initially looking over this and I saw this diagram, I think that's somebody's driveway as well and it would be very difficult for them to come in if all that tra, you know, if there was an influx of outs happening, you know, like at 9:30, you know, whenever something's wrapping up.
Sure, so we have a, I'm sorry to interrupt you. So we have a light system that would be triggered by their vehicle. So if someone's coming in, there's just like a traffic light would be at a traffic light, it would stop traffic coming in for the outs, they would have access and wouldn't be interrupted and then traffic can continue.
So...
Like a garage door opener, but real fancy.
I'm tracking with you.
Okay, okay.
So, but I just wanted to clarify.
Yes.
So essentially there is a on-down further, there is a Y in the road that kind of goes around. And so at that, somewhere around that junction, it would be, it would trigger and or then off the entrance as well or?
Exactly.
Okay.
Exactly.
Interesting, thank you.
Okay, so basically you have plans to avoid impacting the easement rights of your neighbor?
Exactly.
Yes, okay.
Yes, sir. So what are you planning on doing for lighting for these people? I know you have a lighting festival, but what are you doing for lighting for these people getting to and from their car and being able to walk safely or whatever?
So we have Christmas displays planned all throughout the parking area that would aid as secondary lighting, as well as reflective things, car headlights are predominantly used, and then there would be rental of down spotlights, so not, nothing up if that became necessity. But we've looked into many different options to make sure that people have lighting all to their vehicles because it is at night.
So if we're not doing the Christmas festival where we have all the light, then what kind of lighting are we going to use for the other events that we may have?
So I will admit I use a lot of Christmas lighting for other events. It gives a very nice ambiance as well as it does give very calm, low light for people to get to their cars, get in their cars, not be blinded and then go into the night. So a similar use of like a netting Christmas light that you'd find over a bush or something to put perimeter for, for woods and things that would be almost at fence level, that would be able to indicate pathways, as well as we have parking management staff and our security staff would go into parking management well for the heightened times.
Another question I have is, you're going to use grass parking, you said there won't be any gravel or asphalt?
There's gravel on the roads, but other than that, the parking itself is...
So my concern is, how do a handicap people handle the grass?
So we have a designated very flat spot right near the entrance of it, as well as six people and four people, almost golf carts, to get them to the, the entrance way. But it's all, ADA is very important to me. I, I had a lot of family members with MS and other things that crippled them from a very young age, so getting people to and from in wheelchairs and cars is something that I am very familiar with and is quite a challenge, even at places that say they are wheelchair accessible or ADA accessible. So that is of heightened importance to me personally, to make sure that anybody with any kind of ailment can get to and from their vehicle with ease and enjoyment, if nothing else.
One of the last questions I got is, you've talked to EMS and fire and sheriff and all that, everybody's okay?
Sheriff has made the comment that they don't know if they have the people for it. There will be private security on staff for the entirety of any of the festivals, being that we're only open 40-some days a year, that's not 48 days a year. We can, of course, have our own security. In 25 years of festival, we've never had a large incident, knock on wood, for, that would require sheriff involvement on, on site of any of the festivals that I've had a pleasure being a part of.
Will any of those members be certified in any way?
So we have everyone that would be on the EMS side of things, usually our EMS from other localities, municipalities, and we're welcome for, for any local... um, and we're welcome for for any local that have the the energy to come, and and we'd love to have them on service as well. But certification's very important. We'll have a defibrillator on site. Things that are that are just general public safety, but not always required, but I think should be, um, for safety management, uh, cooling tents in the in the heat, um, things of that nature.
I was also talking about the, uh, security as well.
So yeah, security would be trained. It'd be a private security company like a a mall or any other office building would use.
Because I had a couple of conversations with Sheriff Weaver, and he specified the same thing what, uh, Mr. Elliott was just saying. You know, the, you don't always have that, um, plan that somebody's gonna, something's gonna happen, but it always can.
Mm-hmm, of course.
So will you preserve an alcohol there?
Our venue will help offer, uh, vendor spots to all of the wineries and breweries, um, and many of them have expressed interest. They have remote licenses and licensure for that, as well as almost like a food truck. Um, and I'd love for people to have experience of all of Madison County. So yes, if they apply, uh, they would be permitted to do that with the right permitting licensure and health department requirements. Well, I can't imagine there's none now, but I'd like to. And in reference to the traffic point, um, our average trip count for the year would be about forty thousand added trips. To point out, by right, I could take the property and parcel it off. Uh, two and a half acres would, um, according to a a parcelling firm, make me the most money. So two and a half acre parcels would give me seventy-five parcels there, and that would add two hundred and forty thousand, no, excuse me, two hundred and seventy-one thousand more trips per year. So... Not at all. It's just something that's by right available. And while I would love to do something that would benefit the county, in front of you, gentlemen, I actually provided, which is not a requirement, but, uh, projected tax revenue and how I got those numbers for the festival. If we were at fifty percent capacity, you can see in front of you, if we sold half the tickets, we'd be at three hundred and fifty-eight thousand, six hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars a year for Madison alone in tax revenue. And if we were able to successfully sell out, which would be that eight hundred and thirty-five member parking pass, assuming that they fill their cars because parking passes will be the hottest commodity, that would be seven hundred and seventeen thousand, four hundred and fifty-one dollars to Madison revenue, as opposed to an R-one rezoning, which would actually hinder the tax benefit for Madison and put a big, big issue for their schools and everything else, which I think would be a a tragedy and a travesty for what Madison's goals are.
All right, do we, any other questions, please?
If I may, Mr. Chairman, um, and not to put you on the spot, but again, since we're about to have, I think, several comments, um, just so we all have the same number, how many event days in a calendar year will there be general public at your location?
Uh, there will be no general public. It'd be membership only, but it would be, um, it's it's just a slight distinction. However, it is an important one. Um, forty-eight days is what is proposed in front of you.
And that's you Frost Fest, Renaissance Fest, and the two-
Spring, summer, winterfall.
Spring, summer, so that's what we're we're gonna say. What was it again?
Forty-eight days.
Forty-eight days.
Of operation open.
And then potentially other events, weddings could be-
Weddings are a by-right use, and my purpose for putting it in there was in case there was any money exchanged hands, if a friend wanted to get married on the property, anything like that, there would be no cause for litigation or upset from neighbors just stating it, even though it is a by-right use thing of A1.
So not not marketed events, simply private events through your discretion?
Right, a a small wedding or something if the Boy Scouts or Girl Scouts, a local, you know, church group wants to get together and use some of our weaving facilities and things. I'm I'm not gonna tell them no.
Okay, so for for a baseline tonight, forty-eight events is what you're applying for, and that's what is described in that line here. Forty-eight days, sorry, not events. Yeah. Thank you.
For the whole year, forty-eight days out of three hundred and sixty-five.
Okay, um, but not to belabor the point here. The one thing that's still bothering me, I, you have done, as far as I can see, an admirable job in trying to address all the concerns. My primary concern is still the traffic density. Uh, and it looks, based on your numbers here, we're talking about, uh, potentially on Oak Park Road, a hundred and forty-five vehicles within a fifteen-minute time window. That's according to your own own graphic.
So that, um, of the spreadsheet.
Yes.
So that would be the, again, its capacity. So if you take that eight hundred and thirty-five vehicles and you break it down over the five hours, it would be a little less than a hundred and forty-five. Um, but but we're close there, yes.
All right, but that's that's, I'm just afraid that exceeds the capacity of that road, no matter what, in terms of that many cars in a fifteen-minute time period.
So we're working with VDOT and a and another traffic study to determine what that base number is. This is, again, based off of capacity of parking on the property as it stands, so that's the number we're working with.
Yeah, I understand that, yeah. My, uh, and again, I think everything that's under your control, you have dealt with. The entrance and the exit and so forth, and and even making the easement clear when he needs it and so forth. But you have no control over this road.
Correct.
And the highway department is not gonna approve it. So if if it if they require, let's say, uh, right turn lane and left turn lane, they're gonna expect you to pay for it.
Mm-hmm.
So, I mean, and and that's still not addressing the the total density of the traffic on this road. The the one thing I don't, that that's why I had asked earlier for this kind of a of a layout because, I don't know, maybe at at the next, not that, well, it'll be at the joint meeting, if you can have uh, maybe a little more realistic, perhaps.
Sure.
Uh, traffic counts actually on the road at a given time period.
Yes, sir.
This is this is this is aiming toward what I wanted to see, but I'm not sure we're quite there yet as far as the traffic density.
Okay, understood.
Yeah. Uh, and that that is one of the, there there are, in the in the, um, ordinance of the county, there are specific things that we have to look at for a special use permit. One of those is traffic. So traffic safety has to be considered. Any other questions? Yes, sir.
Just made a comment. You're putting a hundred and forty-five cars on Fishback, and I sat there yesterday morning just to see how fast that light worked. You come that light down, you get four cars. So a hundred and forty-five cars would probably back all the way out to the Oak Park Road.
Yeah, uh, see, and again, this is something that's not within your control. Even if you take, you you can consider, perhaps you have three potential ways to get into Oak Park Road. You can come in from fifteen, you can come in from the 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 light there where the McDonald's is, where that's Oak Park Road, or you can come in from Fishback Road. The light at Fishback Road, that left turn lane has room for what, maybe four cars at the most? And then they would be backing up on twenty-nine.
Not only that, Steve, now I have cars come from Old Neil's Road.
Oh, yeah, I forgot that. That's true.
And then you've got Parker's Mill Road.
Yep.
And if you go there on a given morning or given evening, everybody is cutting through those two roads to get over to two-thirty from twenty-nine on Light First.
So I think I think you can understand where our concern is coming from here.
Thank you.
It may be that you may want to consider a a smaller number of memberships per unit of time. I don't know, that that's, it's not our business to give you a business advice, but-
No, but precisely, that's what a traffic survey from a third party is for, to give me exact numbers on everything.
Yeah, yeah, and it would be nice if we had that before the joint meeting, but that's probably not gonna happen because that's really part of what this, the 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 VDOT wants from your site plan, which is a later on in the in the process. All right, thank you.
Any other questions for, yes, Mike, okay?
This isn't so much of a question, it's gonna be a comment. Um, and and once again, I'd like to say that I think the idea is really good. I, once again, I think Christmas lights and Madison and that kind of thing is is really nice. But at the same time, I'd like to say, is there any way that we're gonna be able to regulate how many cars can? I mean, if we approve this, is there gonna be a number that we can come up and say, look, you've got to, you've got to, you can't allow but so many membership sales per thing? Can we put that in this at all, or is this gonna be something, once we approve it, it's it's a free-for-all? And once again, I'm just trying to-
Oh, yes, thank you.
I think that it would likely be reasonable to tie, um, somebody leaned against it. I think it would be, what was one of, was one of a couple of things you can do. And probably the most reasonable would be to rely on VDOT's traffic engineers to set that capacity because that is their profession and expertise. So when the traffic impact analysis is performed, at that time, we'll know exactly what current utilization is, what capacity is, what the impact will be on the neighboring intersections. And VDOT's not gonna permit something that's gonna go beyond that. But we're working on soft data and assumptions when it comes to traffic. And it's not fair to either party, really, but that's my opinion. So I think that it may be appropriate, should you choose to recommend approval, to do so with the condition that the applicant meets the requirements laid out by VDOT during the site plan phase and not exceed that. Uh, so you're not artificially capping somebody's business, but at the same time, you're being responsible to the public and making sure that we're not exceeding what VDOT recommends. And so the applicant would submit a copy of those approvals to the zoning office, which they do anyway as a part of their site plan phase. And if it's attached to their special use permit and they exceed that, then that constitutes a zoning violation. And we deal with that the same way we deal with every violation. So they get a letter, let's say, that cites it, you know, we can impose fines if need be. Uh, we ensure, uh, you know, compliance or your special use permit would be subject to revocation. But it would be nice to tie that to what the engineers have to say and not our assumptions.
And I guess at some point, VDOT's gonna respond.
VDOT will respond, most assuredly, and they often ask for changes that are extensive in what they want to see for profiles and sightlines and traffic counts and all those things, uh, but they'll do it when they have, uh, the engineering.
So I'd just have some general comments, um, before we kinda, I think we're probably headed headed in the direction of the public comments section, which all of you are looking forward to, and we're looking forward to your comments, certainly. Um, but I just wanted to say, you know, like, one thing I always try to remind myself of is that the Virginia Department of Health knows more about sanitation than I do. Um, VDOT knows more about traffic counts and and regulations and needs than I do. Um, we have our building department and our building official and inspectors that 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 look at these buildings and plans and stuff for, uh, you know, access and egress. We have our erosion and sediment. And I think they, you know, there's a lot of layers of of government oversight, uh, through the different stages of any project like this. Small, I mean, if you built built a one single-family home, you would go through all these government, uh, bodies and and adhere to their regulations. Um, there are some things that I that I like a lot about this, um, project in regards, when I look at the the new comprehensive plan that we updated, uh, recently and spent hundreds and hundreds of man-hours on collectively, I think. Um, and something that I'm very proud of, uh, that we've worked on, and, you know, it meets some of those needs identified in that comprehensive plan for the county that I think are important to everybody, the thirteen thousand, you know, rough roughly citizens here in Madison. And, you know, diversified tax base is one, so that we can keep our our taxes low. And one thing that kind of people said that they liked was when people come here and spend money and then leave. Um, it also, um, but people have said for years, I wish there was more to do in Madison. This is something to do. These are the types of events that I, uh, you know, I've certainly taken my family to in other counties. Uh, it's also overall good for small local businesses in Madison, which, you know, are certainly, if anybody, you know, is running one, it's it's a hard thing to do. Um, so so there's there's some positives there. Uh, Alan, can you bring up that zoning map as well?
I can.
For me? And so this is kind of a zoning map here, uh, which just shows, when you get into the bright colors, that generally is significant, uh, signifying a zoning, that would be a higher density. Yellow's R1. Um, and you kinda get into some other business and stuff districts. If I was looking at Madison County as a whole, and I was gonna say, I want this project, where would I put it? It would be right around that gigantic, um, colorful portion of the county in the center there, which is right where this is, about one mile off of, uh, twenty-nine. And it's also possible that this is not appropriate for the county as a whole. But if it were, this would be the place for it. And I know it doesn't seem that way, but, um, so, and maybe it's something we don't want. Some of the things I don't, you know, some of the concerns that I do have, um, are the 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 shared driveway and easement and affecting, seriously negatively affecting, uh, someone's right with access to their home, which I don't think, uh, would be okay. I'm not a big fan of the tall fence. I don't know what fourteen, you know, or whatever. Not worried about security. I'm not worried about crime and stuff like that. Impeding view sheds or animal travel patterns or stuff like that, if it was an extensive fence or something, just seems kinda, just un-unproductive to me. The amount of the weekends and stuff and just a general openness to activity out of the gate, to me, is kind of a hard hard lead-in just to go from nothing to everything, so, um, the land use, tax generation stuff, that is, uh, something that I'm thinking about. And then the fact that it's in three parcels also is not something I'm a big fan of. And that's, those are all my general comments. Thank you, guys.
Any other general comments there?
I have one last question. Have you considered any kind of satellite parking?
I have not, or again, but because of your empty space within the festival grounds and keeping that at a more comfortable pace, we're we're going based on what we can do.
If the traffic count came up to a certain number and you were still wanted, and that that came to whatever number, just less than what you wanted, uh, maybe maybe some kind of a satellite busing them in?
I I would be, I would be open to the op- I'm open to many options, but I would consider busing them in if we found the traffic count could only be a hundred cars.
Put them to park and to bus them.
Precisely, just like they do with the fair.
I didn't know if you considered that, had any thoughts on that?
It, of course, it'd come back within the traffic study, okay? These are older roads that weren't built to specifications from GO, so what is what is the plan B for that? So it would be things like, um, like you said, satellite parking, like they do for the fair or festival. We had also considered for more remote people, like from Richmond or Charlottesville or a further part away, instead of having their vehicles come in and they're all single people meeting together, and that takes up your membership, busing them in so that you don't have that same traffic impact while also still having the revenue for Madison.
Thank you for that, Mike. Sorry. Actually, my list of concerns, traffic was on the top, but it was kinda like too high for me to see, and I started to get upset.
Yeah, I think going forward, that's that's the, probably the top concern, yeah. Uh, I would like to add before we leave this. And I think Alan already has mentioned this. This is very much in line with our comprehensive plan. And if you if you look closely at the neighborhood, what you'll see is this would have the effect of actually saving a large agricultural property in the middle of a lot of residential houses, which is, you know, we're trying to save our A1 land and our C1 land, our agricultural and conservation land in the county. And this is, this is a use which would lightly impact the forestry, forest land there. Not not negatively, but very lightly. All right, any other questions for the applicant, any other comments at this point?
Can I just have one comment?
Yes, sir.
If you respond to that, Ethan.
Yes, ma'am, sorry.
Um, you said all or nothing. This would still be phased out over five years, so it would it would by no means be forty-eight days operation first year. No, um, it would be more in the half of that capacity with a Frost Fest and the Spring Fest- It would be more in the half of that capacity with a Frost Fest and the Spring Festival. The others would have to develop, whether there's desire, vendor availability, many different things. So, it wouldn't be 48 the first year, but it would be over time to increase up to, but no more than that many days.
Thank you. Yeah, I'm more just looking like the rights.
Sure, of course, of course.
Like you have the right to-
Correct, correct.
Out of the gate, like.
Sure.
All right, any other questions? Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. All right, I do, I would like to say one or two things. And Mr. Purrier, if you would wait, please, until we ask for- All right, first of all, I appreciate the fact that several people have gone to the trouble to provide Mr. Nichols with written comments to put in our packet. We can look at those and that gives us a chance to study those. It also gives a chance, for those of you here, for a public comment, to have a chance to say what you want to say. Along those lines, we, obviously, since we had no other public comment on the earlier cases, clearly, we're going to have a lot of public comment on this. And if you would, so that everybody has a chance to speak, allow perhaps three minutes. And we even have a timer here tonight, so if you would try to limit your public comment to three minutes, try to be as concise and specific as you can. And also, since we may have people here who spoke at our last workshop, perhaps if you would wait until people who have not had a chance, that's up to you. But again, try to keep it within three minutes or so, so that everyone has an equal chance to speak their mind. All right, that being said, clearly, we have someone who's decided they're going to be first, so Mr. Purrier, would you go ahead and identify yourself?
Mr. Carver, thank you. Gentlemen, I appreciate the opportunity to appear this evening. My name is Cole Purrier, and I am the owner of adjoining parcels of land, Tax Map Parcels 42 and 43B. I would call your attention to, Mr. Nichols, do you have my slides?
I do.
I would call your attention to a letter that has been submitted dated 14/7/25 from Leonard Bliss Trester. He is the owner of Tax Map Parcel 40-38. And I would note that there are petitions that have been filed with 284 original signatures representing 199 Madison County households. There are 215 signatures from adjoining landowners, and then there's an online petition with an additional 125 signatures from Madison County residents. This plan is ill-conceived. The proposed use is not consistent with the current historic land use and activities in the area. It's a courting plan, there's a lot of form but no substance. This is a plan for a festival grounds. Mr. Smith, it's not an agricultural undertaking. This is a theme park. And it continues to erupt as time goes by. This property is agriculturally zoned and the purpose is to accommodate all types of rural, open land uses, such as agriculture and forestry. The requirements for a special use permit, I'd call your attention to those. Mr. Nichols, do you have a slide?
Which one would you like, Mr. Purrier?
I would go back to my first one. If you upsized that to the-
There you go.
Thank you. There are standards for the approval of a special use permit. Ms. Wiltshire, well, I'm sorry, Will Shear was appointed to the Economic Development Committee on 27 May of 2025, and she's filed a special use proposal to the Preliminary Development Review Committee on 27 May 25. Clearly, there's the appearance of impropriety here. The original proposal dated 27 May of 25 was for one event, Frost Fest. Now, the special use application is for dated 16 June 25 is for four events, and it keeps changing in terms of what those are. And now, we have this fourth event, but we don't know what it is. It's going to be 14 days. Ms. Will Shear denies living here on the 3rd of June of 2025, and at the workshop on the 18th of June of 2025, she says that she lives here. Next slide, please. Those are the direct quotes, I'm sorry, the next quote, next, that's the direct quotes from where she appeared and spoke. And the point is, it's not a matter of come here versus from here, it's a matter of she doesn't even live here. The projected 400, 840 cars per day and 3,000 people per day. That's, that's 1,680 trips, because they don't say cars, they say trips, because the car that goes in is the car that comes out. So, that's 1,680 trips per day, plus 180 vendors, plus 100 employees. VDOT requirement for commercial entrances, cars per day, has to be curbed, guarded, paved, 500 feet of sight distance, and there will probably be a requirement for left and right turn lanes, which means it's going to be a four-lane road in front of this property. Next slide, please, next two slides, please.
Mr. Purrier, if you don't mind, we have lots of people here who would like to speak. That's why I was thanking you for putting this in the packet. You're simply going over the material that you have given us to look at, and we do have that in our information packet already.
Yes, sir. And I'll be finished in just a moment.
There's a reason why we ask for a three-minute time limit. It's so that everyone, please be courteous, everyone has an equal chance to express their public comment.
Thank you.
All right, so everyone who just spoke says that you're not going to attempt to make a public comment further tonight? That sounds fair? All right, Mr. Purrier, if you would continue, they have given you the opportunity.
Next slide, please. This is the picture that Ms. Will Shear presented to the Economic Development Review Committee on the 3rd of June, as to what the entrance to this property looks like. Next slide, please. This is what the property actually looks like today, which is absolutely senseless. Next slide, please. This is the gate that was erected on my road on the 3rd of June of 2025. That is absolutely flawless. Next slide, please. Conclusion, the past performance is the best indicator of the future conduct. Hence, the pictures of the entrance and the gate on the road. Ms. Will Shear is going to do whatever she wants, despite what you all tell her she has to do. No one wants to pay higher taxes, and it's ludicrous to suggest that, but no one should sell their soul for this chaos. Mr. Daniel provided information in reference to revenues, and I calculate $135,000 in revenue that would be generated by over $5 million in activity. And there's no way that this is going to generate that kind of money. This is a concentrated commercial activity in exclusively residential and agricultural area. Next slide, please. It's not consistent with the zoning in the area. Any economic benefit has got to be balanced against the adverse effects in the area. This will fundamentally change the character of this whole area. I would ask the Planning Commission not to recommend approval to the Board of Supervisors. I would ask the Board of Supervisors to deny the special use permit. And yes, Mr. Smith, anybody who is suggesting this would be something that ought to come to the county, I need you to take two steps back and ask whether they would want this in their backyard, and I guarantee you the answer is no. Thank you.
All right, further public comment for those who have not said that they would no longer publicly comment. Identify yourself, please, and go ahead.
Michael Bianco, I'm one of the owners of the property, and a few comments. I would like you to first imagine the best of all possible worlds. Molly and I have a long record of doing amazing things, and that's what we're trying to bring to Madison. We're not trying to make your life miserable, we're not trying to make traffic horrible, we're trying to make things wonderful. And if you can imagine what that would look like, it would be what we're proposing. Yes, traffic is an issue, but we've done everything we can to make that work. And we've modified the drawings, we've modified the tax things, we've modified everything, and we're going to continue to modify it to meet the requirements and the needs that people are complaining about. So, we're amenable to change, we're amenable to making things right for everybody. So, if you can imagine that, yes, this is something that's wonderful for the community, and we'll do whatever we can. You were a little worried about the 14-foot wall? Well, that was something we created to combat noise. Does it have to be 14 feet? No, it can be whatever we decide makes sense, and we is all of us. We have to respond to VDOT, we have to comply with all of the regulatory compliance. It's not something that we're just doing. We have to meet all those requirements every single time, every single step of the way. And they're there to protect you, and we understand that completely. Mr. Purrier got up and showed some pictures of the driveway, and he was very, understands that the reason we modified the driveway so that we could get a big truck down there. And he knew that, he knew that right away. He also knows that we can put a gate on the property, and that's not his issue. But it bothers him, so that's why he's complaining. He's our neighbor, he has a right of way, and we'll make that work. We'll give him his own private lane if that's what is required, absolutely. It's not where we're forcing him into any situation, we'll make it work for everybody. That's really all I needed to say. Thank you very much.
Any further public comment? Yes, ma'am.
Hi, don't worry, I practiced, it's three minutes flat.
Thank you. We appreciate it.
Good evening and thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Margot McLean of 116 Riding Trail Lane. I'm here to oppose the special use permit application for Madison Hills event. This project is in direct violation with the Madison County zoning ordinance and should not be recommended for approval. I also sent something in, if you're able to pull that up, it cites some of these zoning codes. Thanks. According to Section 144 of the zoning code, special use permits must not negatively impact neighboring properties or the character of the area. Madison Hills fails its test in several critical ways. Number one, the zoning intent of rural character. The code states the use must not be contrary to the zoning district's intent. This one is. Property zoned A1 meant for agriculture and low-density residential use. 186-acre commercial venue with thousands of visitors, amplified sound, seasonal festivals, and hundreds of vendor booths violates the intent of the agricultural zoning and introduces a disruptive commercial footprint in a peaceful residential corridor. Number two, light and noise pollution. The code prohibits uses that cause objectionable noise and glare. The proposed LED light shows, the amplified music will disrupt neighboring properties in the dark rural environment, especially in winter when the vegetation no longer buffers sound or glare. Number three, environmental and conservation harm. The code states the project must not adversely affect natural resources. The plan includes a 14-foot perimeter fence, or whatever kind of fence, around forested land adjacent to rivers and wildlife corridors. This will fragment habitats, block migration paths, and degrade the ecosystem. This land acts as a carbon sink and buffer for the watershed, creating parking and additional structures undermines local conservation efforts. Number five, loss of property value. The code states the project must not impair the value of adjoining properties. It absolutely will. The total value of the homes bordering this property is over $11 million. Based on standard market impact near commercial event venues, we stand to lose at least 25% of our property values. Almost $3 million in private losses to the taxpayer and the community. Compare that to the projected 300,000 in tax revenue the county might gain. The math simply doesn't work. To be clear, Madison County would be authorizing a loss of $9 for every $1 it stands to gain. The homeowners will bear the costs while a private operator profits. If tax revenue were the only standard, there'd be no zoning at all. This venue belongs in a commercially zoned location like Route 29, not a forested residential corridor. You don't need to prove this project will cause harm to deny it. The burden is on the applicant to prove that it will not, and they have not met that burden. I respectfully ask the committee to recommend denial of the special use permit. Thank you.
Thank you, and that was exactly three minutes. That was wonderful. Yes, ma'am, your name.
Hi, my name is Lynn Dawson, I live on Riding Trail Lane, and I also have a couple of slides. So, I will start by saying that my number-one concern was the traffic. And so, I was heartened to hear the detailed discussion about what the potential issues are. The second concern I have is the fact that the ordinance states that the use of a special use permit shall not tend to change the character and established pattern of development. And when you look at this large map, all you see is residential, and then in the middle of it is 186 acres. And 186 acres is a large property, but it's only about half a mile across between my home, and I'm right, I'm that picture that's in most of the slides that were shown, and Holly Hills on the other side. So, when we start talking about 3,000 or more people in that area, that seems like a lot of people right over my fence line, and I can see from my house into the property behind it, as can my neighbor, Margot, who just spoke. So, we're concerned about that many, that number of people. Can we go to the next slide? We hear a lot of people talking about this venue versus Graves, Graves Mountain, and it's really not an appropriate comparison. Graves Mountain has 1,800 acres compared to this 186 acres. On the Graves Mountain, on the right side, you see very few homes within a mile of their entrance, as opposed to all the homes that we have in all the various subdivisions. That circle on the map is about 1.5 miles in diameter, but I didn't make it that size for any reason, you could make it smaller, you could make it larger. But what you see is one venue surrounded by homes and another venue that is not. So, additionally, Graves is own commercial, so that's another major difference. So, anyway, I appreciate the opportunity, and I appreciated the traffic discussion that happened earlier. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. All right, before we move forward, I would add, since, and this was the reason that I prefaced the public comment with this statement, if you have provided us already with the information that's in our packet, then you are taking three minutes from somebody who has not had a chance to do that. So, yes, sir, do you have, have you already provided us with written information, or?
No, sir, I have not submitted anything.
Good, okay, thank you.
I'm not going to rehash what everybody else has spoken about in opposition of this. My name is James Pike, I live at 2123 Oak Park Road, and I am in opposition of this. There's a few things that I don't think have really been addressed. One is the traffic count is way off, because we're basing this on 48 days, not on the additional weddings, school events, anything else. The other thing that's not been taken into account when we start talking about vehicle count is you're talking about passenger cars, you're not talking about the service trucks and the vendor trucks. You're going to have heavyweight equipment coming in there, vacuum trucks for the porta-potties, the delivery trucks for the porta-potties. So, you've got 180 vendors coming in, plus support vehicles to keep the venue running. Those are going to be heavy trucks. That road is not meant for that, okay? Most of the intersections have been addressed. The problem is, is VDOT goes along and they say, "Oh, we need to make a road improvement." Guess what? They're going to claim eminent domain to improve the intersection, so somebody's going to lose their house for somebody else's project. The other thing that's not been addressed is the helipad. Is that only going to be for emergency use? Or are we going to be allowing people to fly in to look at the venue and, oh, participate in the venue? That's not a airport. Accumulated noise between the venue and the helicopters is going to be unbearable, and a 14-foot fence is not going to change that. Not to mention, if one of those helicopters takes off and crashes in the subdivision, how are you going to justify what you've done here today if you approve this? Last thing I want to add here, I've been hearing about decorum. I, as a citizen of this county, do not appreciate being called a name, NIMBY. Mr. Smith, you owe every one of us an apology for that. Mr. Smith, you owe every one of us an apology for that. Thank you, sir. That's all I have to speak about tonight.
Yes, ma'am.
Hi. No, I don't have a slide. I -- sorry.
Your name, please.
My name is Heather Burtle. I actually live on Gate Road, so I live behind the majority of what is happening. Some of the questions that I do have are for Ms. Wiltshire and as well as you guys. I do love the idea of this, however -- however, I don't think that this location is a good location. I think that we have many other locations, like the county parks, which we could utilize and benefit and can take quite a lot of our current traffic. And I think it would benefit not only the county and the county parks, which the county parks are fully for everybody. It wouldn't benefit just one person. It would benefit us all. And that's kind of what I'm hoping to see. Not only that, but the school currently does utilize the county park. And a lot of the items that she's proposing, we -- many county residents already, already do their own light show for free or ask for donations, or she's going to be competing with the county park. You know, hot cocoa with Santa. So she's going to be taking away from something that the county park already does. They do a storytime through the wood. So I would actually love to see her actually implement her amazing ideas with the county parks and make that grow and make use of her talents with them and then benefit all of us. So I -- not only that, I know that she's doing this county ren fair, and that looks like it's already going to be potentially at the same time that there's already a Renaissance fair happening at Lake Anna Winery, which is only an hour and a half from us. So why would people -- so I know I myself have gone there, so why would I go to our current backyard one when it was already established and it's decent and all, and they have a traffic pattern? So, yeah, that's kind of all that I have to say. I am worried about the traffic. I'm worried about the lights, especially because, like I said, I am behind there. And I would be able to see when there's no leaves on those trees, I can see a lot, and I can hear a lot, and I'm back far enough. If I can still hear, that could be a problem. So I do oppose this. Thank you for listening. Have a good day.
Thank you, ma'am.
We're having trouble hearing someone's speaker.
Yes, ma'am.
Hi there. My name is Bernadine Connolly-Clark. I live in the Malvern area. I am unfortunately a NIMBY. I don't appreciate coming, hoping that my voice will be heard and being silenced and categorized right from the start. I came with great hopes of being listened to, and it's pretty disappointing to be pigeonholed from the start. In fact, to your point of expertise, I take that point, but we also know that local citizens have wisdom and that common sense comes from people living in a place and knowing its topography, its flashpoints, its tensions, all of that. So I don't think we're coming from someplace that doesn't come from a lot of experience, on-the-ground experience, which, as we know, much as we all love the government, can sometimes not always come inside with the place that the government comes down on. So I would also say let's balance the two, right? We have people who obviously have lived here for a long, long time and know it with their eyes closed. Fishback comes to mind. If anyone was in the rain on Fishback, I'm glad you're here because it was tough. I also want to make a couple of other points. This is absolutely not agritourism. I love the comprehensive plan. I appreciate it. I love Madison County. I live here by choice. I really appreciate the low taxes. I appreciate that you're here for your $40 a meeting or whatever you're getting here. I know you're here for good reasons. I really do appreciate that. I have four kids in their 20s. I wish they could get jobs here. They live, they work outside the county. I get all of those pressures, but don't ruin it in the short term for, what was it, $700,000? That doesn't sound like that much to me for the -- what you're doing to this area. It doesn't sound like that much at all for what you're doing to the nearby residents. It also doesn't sound like it will necessarily happen. I can imagine all I want, sir, but those aren't what the numbers say. And I have been to many of these festivals. I happen to be married to a medieval historian. We go to these sort of things, okay? They're not agritourism. They're not the kind of thing that promotes an area in and of itself. You don't go there the way you go to Montpelier or Monticello or some things like that where you also say, "Wow, this is really what Madison County is." This is, to use a lovely phrase, more like a theme park that happens to be located in a rural place and taking advantage, I would say, of an ag designation even though it's really a commercial -- this is a commercial operation. I don't see the educational part. I can call it all I want. This isn't like certain places that you see in Albemarle County that are combining education and commerce. This is commercial, and I have nothing against that, but call it that from the beginning. When I look at the map that you showed, that's where I would have it, I see, no, that's exactly where I would not have it. Let's have it someplace that isn't making this kind of terrible impact on people who have probably most of their life savings invested in their home equity, and that's going right away. So there are impacts here that go beyond traffic, that go beyond data, that go beyond spreadsheets, and I think that we have to be clear about it. I thank you for your time, and I really hope that you will listen to us and not just think of us as NIMBYs.
Thank you, ma'am. Yes, sir.
Hi, my name is Richard Mauer, and I live on Oak Park Road, 4215 Oak Park Road. We have a 20-acre farm on Oak Park Road, and it is zoned A1. And believe it or not, we actually do agricultural things on that property. We actually have raised cattle. We have hay currently. We have horses. We've had chickens and sold eggs. Somehow, we've been able to make a go of it without having to have Renaissance festivals or other crazy events like that. We moved to Madison 25 years ago for the rural lifestyle, for the quiet, dark nights, and the pursuit of agricultural interests. Most of the people that come here come for those same reasons. None of these values are represented in Madison Hills, which I will rename Molly's Folly Proposal. Molly's Folly is absolutely wrong for this county. This is not a special use permit application. It's a rezoning from agricultural to commercial. Does Mrs. Wiltshire plan to actually live on the property like most of us that have agricultural property do? I think the answer is no. However, she's more than happy to profit by its revenue generation and the bill of goods that she has sold to the county is more about revenue, which is pennies for the county and millions for her. Mrs. Wiltshire would have been better off using her business background and should have spent more time trying to identify a commercial property on 29, as has already been recognized by other people here. My heart goes out for the 40-plus or more property owners that are adjacent to this debacle for the lost revenue, which has also been mentioned in terms of depreciated values of home and property as a result of having this, and the difficulty, should they ever decide to move, of even trying to sell their property with this nightmare next door. I'd like to go back to when we moved here 25 years ago. I approached the county about having a one-person woodworking business on our property. We were dragged over the coals about signage, how many people are going to be coming to your property, and compared to this, it was a nightmare. Finally, the last point, which was actually touched on earlier, the fact that Mrs. Wiltshire, I believe, has been a member of the Economic Development Council is a serious and clear conflict of interest, and this board should be -- this board should be ashamed to even consider this proposal from someone who has a vested economic interest and a conflict of interest. Thank you very much.
Ryan Mazeros. I'm Bridle Trail Lane, so directly affected by this. I'll address two quick points. EMS, great, we can get a truck in there. However, I've not seen a general nor specific EMS plan for first aid services. An event this size, working for SAM, Special Events, Medical Management through UVA, who does Foxfields, a comparable size, for that event, we have a tent with two physicians, four to six medics in that tent, two roving EMS providers through the event, three to four gators, four to six ambulances on-site for transport. I see none of that noted here and expecting our substandard EMS providers here to fill that or even asking -- we don't have the -- we don't have the people to do it, is what I'm saying. Forgetting about the fact of fire suppression, 180 vendors, tents, if something goes up, expecting our volunteer services to put this out, we're going to have another Graves Mountain fire. Traffic, we're told we're already 55% usage. Adding to 1,000, we're now 100%. Not taking to effect the 400 homes and big box store adjacent to Presbyterian Church on Fishback, as well as the 40 to 100 homes in the property between Gate Road and our area, which may go onto fox hunters. Thus, far surpassing were usage of the road. My son had a medical emergency two weeks ago, requiring the sheriff to be called. Took 17 minutes for the deputy to get here. Seven, eight o'clock on a weekday day, no traffic, I drove from Rutgersville before he arrived. Adding all these vehicles to this road, four-minute light, getting four cars through there, no services are going to come to anyone in this area or through the area for services. So I wholeheartedly oppose this. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Cameron Covington of Malvern. Did not appreciate the NIMBY comments. I mean, that's completely unacceptable. You know, you're talking about us. I mean, that's just flat out, just, oh, well. I could say a lot I'm not going to. And I mean, it's crazy that you refer to your constituents as that. I mean, it's just -- but I -- so she got put on the Economic Development Committee. They were talking about putting on her employee, Derek, from Pennsylvania. Is she a resident of Madison? I mean, is her physical address the 299 or what? Okay. When did you change it to that?
When I moved here.
When you moved?
This --
What day?
No, this is not a question and answer period.
No.
You make your comments.
No, I haven't made all of them, okay?
I make your comments. Do not attack the applicant.
I'm not attacking --
Do not attack the board members.
Y'all attacked us. Yeah. All right. So --
Little courtesy, please.
Listen, okay, yeah, we'll stop. Somebody on the board, and your minutes are substandard, I believe it was Jewitt, said the -- one of the main purposes to put her on that Economic Development Committee, and it's in the YouTube minutes, because I had to go back through and watch it, was her project. So how is that not a conflict of interest from the get-go? You guys didn't vet her. You guys just said, "Oh, Tracy Gardner said this." And I'm not, you know, talking ill on her or what she does, but it's ridiculous. I mean, and she came in and she saw, and it's nothing against the lady that was wanting to put the camper on, she read the room. She thought that she could come into a rural community. She's from Bethlehem, PA. It's a metropolitan area. In Bethlehem, they didn't want, Bianco and her, you can look it up, I've got everything I can provide it for you, they didn't want an old parking garage torn down and rebuilt with a new one that supposedly, from what I read, was going to have office space in it, apartments, different things. Her words, something along the lines of she didn't want it, all the New York City-type people to be in her metropolitan, okay? She's coming to an area with 13,000 people in the county, all right, from a metropolitan area. You see where I'm going with this? They didn't want it in their area, something that was going to be in the same footprint that was actually going to help their community. And one of -- I mean, there's just so much to it. One of their things was the elevator in it. I mean, she was trying to nitpick all these little things in it, but yet it would have helped them. I mean, it's just, it's crazy that they want to come in here and put something in the only area in the county that is residential. I mean, it's ridiculous. I mean, and I'm part of the 70%, which is the majority. I rigged a comprehensive plan that commutes to work. You know why I commute to work? Because I want to come back and have a quiet, peaceful place to live at. I've been up since 3:00 in the morning. You know, I -- sometimes I work six days a week. It's -- I don't want to come home and sit in traffic. And so who's going to regulate to how many people are actually coming, you know, at one time? She says that she's going to meter it. Who's going to meter it? Who's going to, you know, say, "Oh, well, Billy Bob's late and Susan's late, so they can't come now?" I mean, and then she said, "Oh, there's only going to be 835 passes sold in a day." But then she's saying that there's going to be even more traffic on her thing. I mean, it's just, there's so many discrepancies. She said that she wasn't going to live there, that she was going to have somebody reside there, and now, you know, she's supposedly living there. I mean, it's just, I don't want to say what I want to say. I think you guys get the picture. I'm done.
Thank you. Thank you.
I guess raise my hand.
Yes, sir.
My name is Robert Carpenter. I live on Bridle Trail Lane, so fairly close to the -- fairly close to this. I appreciate the extensive traffic study that's being done on Oak Park. However, let's be honest, Oak Park is not going to be the only road that's going to be affected. We're definitely talking about also Fishback Road. That's going to be the primary entrance. Inconceivable that they would take 230 and go that way. It's possible, but I would say the majority of the traffic is going to be coming across Fishback. We also have a large development with at least 200 apartments that's going to be on that road as well coming in. So the question that I would have, if I were in your position, would be what is the impact that's going to be happening on Fishback as well as Oak Park Road? The other thing was the comment about not raising our taxes, which is not actually true because we discovered this year that our taxes have in fact been raised, not by a rate, but by an appraisal that has doubled. Our taxes are already footing the bill, and the question that you really have to have is, given the revenue that's going to be coming from this, is it going to cover the necessary road improvements that's going to be needed in order to handle all of the traffic, including the large vehicles? I count at least 40 booths that are on the map. The plan said 20 cars for vendors. So let's just assume that the business plan is in fact, half of her booths are going to be empty. At least half of those, which is 10, are going to be food trucks. I don't know if you've actually driven on Fishback Road and tried to turn onto Oak Park Road going that left-hand turn, but you're going against the curve. It's going to be very difficult to navigate that. So I would, I would be really careful about that because it's, like I said, it's going to be a huge impact to that area.
Thank you, sir. Yes, ma'am.
Hi. My name is Karen Bruce. I own a house at 116 Bridle Trail Lane. I inherited home recently from my father. I haven't moved into the home as yet, but my daughter and her family are living at the home until I can convince my husband to retire. I'm kind of having a problem with him. We own a HVAC company, and he's not ready. So I let my family move in there. After my father died, I did some improvements to his home. He'd been in the home for over 20 years. Being elderly, living there by himself, he did quite a bit of damage to the home. I invested a lot of money in his home. This folder is full of all the receipts that I have personally put in his home to try to make it a home for my family. And now I'm hearing all this rigmarole, and I'm just totally beside myself. I took the time to remodel his home so that I could make an investment. The problem with this is, this is a quiet community in which we all live, and this is the reason why my father built here and everybody else, I'm sure. The noise, pollution from the events, the dangers of open fires from campers, are the limits to how long campers are allowed to stay? Three, five, seven days? We don't know. We were just clueless. We, we were just clueless. Will the campers be unsupervised? Will they be responsible for them? Who's going to be responsible? Are they going to be guarded? They're going to be, you know, we just don't know. The increased traffic on Fishback Road and several roads leading to the event site are all one-lane roads. Traffic impeding upon all the locals trying to come and go to their homes is just going to be non-stop and endless. I just can't even imagine this horrendous thought. Traffic light delays because of the excess traffic in our area and the people living on Restoration Lane. I'm sorry, they'll never be able to let out of their homes. There's three people that live on that home. They'll never be let out if those people have anything to say with it because the only thing they're going to be looking at is that traffic light to turn green. And we all know, three to four cars at one time can get through. That's it. So that in itself is just huge. Our wildlife, I know maybe that sounds silly, but we live in the country. Our wildlife habitat needs to be, somebody needs to speak about this because it prevents the animals, they're being forced out of their natural habitat. The land that was theirs until things like this come along and consume the natural habitat. It is just, I, I just don't have enough words to describe it, enough adjectives. I'm already living in a nightmare in Northern Virginia and trying to escape. I currently live one mile from Bull Run Park, okay? Bull Run Park. In Fairfax, Virginia, I'm almost done. It only, it only accesses the park by one-lane road each way. On the winding road, which is a nightmare for our community for Halloween, Christmas, Renaissance fairs, carnivals in ground, pools that they have camping, hiking and other activities. We have, can do nothing to get in and out. The, the traffic, I just can't explain it. You cannot get anywhere. This idea with perhaps it's, it's someone's dream. What about our dreams of a peaceful community? A place to raise our children and our grandchildren? To turn off the lights and have a peaceful rest and not have to listen to the alcoholic-induced craziness in our quiet, laid-back community? Please stop, not in our Fox Ridge neighborhood. Go elsewhere to the county because this venue doesn't belong in this residential area. I thank you very much. So that's a lot of money in this folder.
Thank you, ma'am. Yes, sir.
Good evening. My name is Darrell Estes. I am a co-owner of Tax Map Parcel forty dash forty-three, forty C, forty dash forty-three C. And that is the only improved residential property with state road frontage that is adjacent to the property in question. First off, just for the record, I'm not going to go into a tirade or lengthy comment, but just note my exception to Mr. Smith's comments and hope that they'll take the feedback from this evening and apply that in the future to be more objective and more professional in his demeanor during the meetings. My concern as a co-owner of that property is, of course, the traffic and potential to lose part of the property for the improvement that may be needed for the turn lanes. And so that's the main reason for my objection to the, to the project at hand that's being proposed. And I would ask that the board, please not, excuse me, the commission, please not recommend approval to the board and that the board not approve it as well. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
I offered my three minutes, but he only used seven and there was a dozen people. So, just, just for a moment. My name is Mark Bruno. And I moved to Fox Hunters Lane sixteen years ago. And one of the reasons I picked that spot is because I love the residential neighborhood that I live in, okay? And every time I pull out a Fox Hunter onto Fishback, you know, I notice the traffic that's there and it's not too bad yet, okay? But you know, if this thing happens, you know, we talk about VDOT and what VDOT approves and disapproves. You know, when I drive home from Charlottesville and I'm on twenty-nine, what I, when I'm stuck in all that traffic, that's something VDOT approved, okay? What are they going to approve for my neighborhood? A lot of traffic like that? So that's one of the things. You know, the other, the other point I want to make is to the board. Here we are, alright? This is our home. This is our neighborhood. We have a lot invested and you guys all work for us. And whatever you do, whatever vote you make, you can look at all the technical aspects of this and that's fine. But when it comes down to the bottom line, I think you need to hear us. This is something that this neighborhood does not want. It is not agricultural, okay, which is what it's zoned, okay? And it is in fact commercial. Period end sentence. So it doesn't fit, let's not do it. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Good evening. My name is Jennifer Mizaris. I live in the Fox Ridge subdivision. This will be potentially in my backyard. First, I'd like to say I don't appreciate feeling threatened by Mr. Smith with what could come of a pig farm saying that this is going to be better than having squealing hogs. I hate to tell you, I have seven kids. Some of them are special needs and I've done foster care. Noise does not scare me from that aspect. The other thing I would like to say, I don't appreciate from Ms. Wiltshire for threatening to divide the house or the property up and potentially making it two-and-a-half acre lots. I think this just embodies. I, I think it gives the wrong message from both parties. We've all heard about traffic. My thing too is, you're talking numbers of cars. I have two potential young drivers, a fifteen and a thirteen-year-old that will be trying to learn how to get out of Fox Ridge and manage those roads. I don't appreciate the extra traffic and the cause. Mr. Elliott has said the speed limit on that Fishback Road. You can post anything you want. We all know, nobody does the speed limit, number one. Number two, look at the round of roadkill on that road, deer alone. And that shows you the speed of those people, not to mention that blind hill. And as well as this summer, try looking around the vegetation as fast as it's growing. Not to mention this area highly populated, there's a large elderly population. So let's not look at the amount of traffic, but the drivers that are behind those wheels. I have a safety concern for the amount of people coming in and where they're coming and the type of people. Before Ms. Wiltshire took down some of her Facebook posts, we have people talking about being sloppy drunk at the Ren Fair. And these are on her social media that have since been taken down. Talking about having alcohol there. Who's going to monitor what's coming in? We have people on Facebook posts saying, oh, great, I would like a marijuana festival as well. Is somebody going to be looking in bags if anybody's bringing in alcohol or any other illicit drugs? Renaissance Fairs, do you have issues with this? Again, there's also posts on Molly she had on one of her Facebook posts. She reposted something from the Satanic Church of America. Is this what you want in your town? I don't. And I'm not afraid to say that either. Tell me about sound and noise. You can do any project you want. We all just had the county fair. It was great. It was one weekend. How many people on Friday night could hear that rodeo? Or Saturday and hear the demolition derby? So again, sound studies are nice, but let's talk reality. Again, let's, sound, light, all of those things. She's also, I agree, said in the first meeting, she lived in Louisa and they told her to come to Madison because it had nice property. Why didn't she stay in Louisa? You've all said, reference it as a commercial property. It is a commercial property. It is not fitting in with this landscape. We've talked about one event, two events, now we're up to four events and weddings. There, so don't tell me forty-eight days. She could have a wedding every Friday, Saturday and Sunday that she doesn't have those events in place. Educational, is that Monday through Friday as well? What is, she really could have three hundred and sixty-five days of events. That's what that special use permit is. And it would like, I'm going to keep going because I think what hasn't been addressed is on that traffic study. Have you been to a Renaissance Festival? Those are not timed entries. Everybody tends to come in at first thing. They hang around for the day and everybody leaves at once. So we're not talking a hundred and forty-five cars in this fifteen minutes. We're talking probably eight-hundredths of a thousand cars within that first hour trying to get in the same time as leaving. Again, Ren, the Frost Festival, you're going to end at ten? How many people are going to be trying to get out on dark roads? Not lit well at anything? The study in terms of erosion and environmental? Again, the county does all that, thank you. Come to my driveway on Fox, on Fox Ridge. They approved that driveway. You want to tell me, you want to see the erosion and everything? I had to do, our neighbor who's also here has had to do multiple things. So you can cite all the studies you want. When it comes to reality, the county approved those. And that's what I was told when I questioned why my driveway, why everything is all funneled towards the corner of our house and we've had flooding. And he said, oh, the county approved it. That's it. That probably wraps it up. I don't agree with this plan. I do think, Ms. Wiltshire, if you want this, find commercial property on twenty-nine. That's safety. I hope you deny it, but I'm a little skeptical based on the responses of Mr. Smith.
My name is Holly Brooks. I live in Happy Hills. So I can pretty much tell you anything you want to know about Happy Hills. The people are there. We're mostly retired now. There, I think there's one lady that has like a daycare in her home. But other than that, it's all those old fogies that live in there, okay? Alright. They've been talking about the traffic on Oak Park Road. Let me tell you, that intersection of Fishback, I always want to call it Bitchburg, Fishback and Oak Park Road, that's a dangerous intersection. Ask me how I know. I dodge people coming from the west, trying to make a left-hand turn onto Fishback. They've had a few accidents there. I've lived in Happy Hills since nineteen ninety-one. Been had a couple of bad accidents there. It's not good. The other thing, we have a community well in Happy Hills. Bet you nobody knew that. I do, okay? So it's fourteen houses. She starts drilling up there on her big hill or whatever it is. What's going to happen if she accidentally hits where our water comes from? Fourteen houses without water, not good. The other thing was, people talked to me about our electricity. Last week or the week before, five and a half hours, no electricity. My house was ninety-two degrees on a ninety-eight degree day. I can't take that heat. My poor dogs, they were panting and carrying on too. As a matter of fact, it was a little cooler outside than it was in my house, okay? So how much electricity is going to get pulled from this venue? We've had troubles with our electricity before. They finally got the squirrels out of the transit place. And so then we've been doing okay till recent. We've had a few thunderstorms and stuff, so that's okay. The other thing, if they're going to have camping up there, what do you do? When do you do camping? Everybody? They have a campfire. Hey, let's have a campfire up there. What's going to happen with trees, the pine needles? Especially if we have another dry spell. Hold on. I, we all became concerned when we had the wildfire. Didn't get real close to us, but it was coming. Now it's going to be in our neighborhood. And we're not really happy about it. Safety? Alright, traffic on Oak Park Road? What's going to happen with congestion of cars? Nobody's moving, they're gridlocked or whatever. Somebody in Happy Hills needs an ambulance or a fire truck. And they can't get through. Somebody's house is going to go up. Somebody's going to die. No, no. We don't want that. I talked to every person in Happy Hills except two. I don't know if they were on vacation or what. But I never did get a hold of them. And I will tell you, ninety-six percent of the people that live in Happy Hills do not want this in their neighborhood. They're talking about a helicopter. That crashes into my house, I'm not going to be happy. I'm going to tell you that right now. This is not the area for this. They can find another big section of land somewhere on a business section. Not here in the country. We like our privacy. We like our quiet. We'd like to live our retirement. Until we don't, we're not here anymore. Then you can do what you want, okay? Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Bonnie Carpenter. And I live on, not Rital Trail, but Rital Trail Lane. I was not going to do this tonight. I'm not a speaker. I'm more of a researcher. And I've watched you guys three or four times each meeting. Rewatching it, rewatching it and catching what you said and what Ms. Wiltshire has said. And I will make that public. Mr. Jackson, on the eighth of July, you said, "We have looked at the means, the roads in Madison are awful." I have you quoted verbatim. Yes. You said, and it was about the, the bridge in Nether's Mill. And you said that you were looking at a six-year plan. But that six years, it turned, it was going to turn into more and more and more. I think you said years upon years upon years. How are you going to fix Oak Park Road and Fishback Road? If you don't have enough money to take care of your community? Another thing, I want to thank Mr. Carpenter. I heard you the first night she brought this forward. You were the only one in this whole group, plus some of the ones that are missing, that asked how her neighbors felt about this. You were the only one. And Mr. Smith, I just, I can't. I cannot believe your nasty attitude. I am so proud to call these people my neighbors. And it's not just my neighbors who are against this. You need to look at the information that has been sent into you saying we are against this. This is going to affect five hundred homes. Not just the subdivisions, but the whole thing. And I got those numbers from Allen. Five hundred homes. You work for us, not the other way around. We appreciate what you do. Mr. Jackson came in here, he looked like he'd about had it. I appreciate that. I appreciate you being here. And I just, I, I implore you, please think of what this is going to do to our community, our homes. We've, we almost paid our house off. We were looking to retire here, but there's no way. And I won't take any more of your time, but I thank you for what you do. And I implore you, please think about this. Because it's going to hurt a lot of people and not just her backyard neighbors.
Thank you, ma'am.
Hi, I'm Brittany Dews. I live on Shelby Road near the transfer station. Bonnie and Robert Carpenter are my parents. And they live on Rital Trail Lane. So this will be right in their backyard as well. I moved here when I was in seventh grade and my parents are almost paying their house off. So to hear that my dad might not be able to retire in Madison, which was the dream, is extremely upsetting. I did have a couple of questions. I did some research about transfer stations and whatnot. And the average American puts out about five pounds of trash a day. And our last census, we had around fifteen thousand people. So that's five pounds per person. It ranged around seventy-three thousand for just that. We are bringing in about, from my understanding, two hundred or more homes onto that exact same road, Fishback. And then you're going to put in a event place, which I did research and... and the average visitor will bring in about a pound to a pound and a half of trash. That is not counting your vendors and your people that are living there, or people that are volunteering or anything like that. They will put forth about the five pounds as well. Does our transfer station have the ability to put forth this trash and to keep Madison clean? I worry about that. I also worry about having alcohol on this property. I understand there is alcohol in our homes, but we're staying at home when we drink. We're not leaving from a venue and going home. My husband drives at nighttime, he doesn't get home until midnight. He has to take these roads at night. And I'm very worried that a drunk driver, or whatever else they are on, on these Renaissance Fairs, my husband might not come home to me. And I understand that there's drunk drivers every day. But also Ms. Wilshire said that the county sheriff's department said that they don't feel they can upkeep with this Renaissance Fair. So where are police officers going to be? She will have her own police and security and EMT for her event. But when they leave her event, who are, who's going to take care of them then? They're your, they're your responsibility at that point. So what happens then? Once they're off your property, it's kind of like, oh, well, you know, sorry, there's a drunk driver. And I'm very worried about that. And I understand with the people who want to come in and do a marijuana festival, yes, they might not be able to sell cannabis, but they can sell pipes, they can sell paraphernalia, they can sell synthetic marijuana and things like that, which sometimes is even worse than marijuana itself. And also, that is the demographic that you're pulling. I've never seen anyone say, hey, Graves' Mountain Lodge, can we sell marijuana at your venues? Can we sell alcohol? I haven't seen that. This is the demographic coming to Madison. Is this what you want your children to be with? Thank you.
Hello, my name is Kevin Nguyen, Fox Hunters Lane. I won't open up with any nasty comments, what's already been said, what we're all feeling. Outside time matches the mood already, it's kind of dark. I want to, first of all, thank Mr. Elliott for taking that drive to Fishback. See what we see, see what we have to drive through every day. It's our, it's our way to work, fun work. It's where our, well, not my children, obviously, it's for, you know, your children. Their way to school and from school. What troubles me is, I took a small gander on some of Ms. Wilshire's petition. Sure, some of you have too. And, I get it, it's an open forum, you can support whatever you want, it's your right. It's your right to be, it's right to do that here. What just really bothered me is that most of her support either comes from out of state, whether it come from Bethlehem, Pennsylvania, or when it comes from in county. When it comes from in county, it comes from people who aren't on Fishback, Oak Park, et cetera, et cetera. It's not any of you. And so that just... So she brings up the... She brings up the possibility, oh, yeah, she could chop up her land and sell it. It's in her right, absolutely. It's in her right to do whatever she wants. If it's zoned as agricultural tourist, which she'd absolutely do. We don't like it, but it's her, it's her right. But it's also our right, in the pursuit of our happiness, for our peace and quiet. That's why we pay out the butt for it. Listen, it's really high. I don't know nothing about numbers, it's what I know, it's not me, it's my parents, it's my brother. And I speak as a future generation, saying, that's not the kind of thing I want when I, when I take my parents' land and live with my brother. That's not what I want. And for any of you on council and planning mission, is it right, or is it just to... To just plan anything in Madison County without considering, oh, don't forget these summer storms, which are going to happen out of nowhere? Or, or heck, just recently, I'm sure some of you lost power the other day. What's going to happen on that festival ground, or fair, or what have you? When that happens? What happens in a surprise if we have a snowstorm or whatnot? Those roads can't handle it, we've lived here our lives, and I've lived here for, well, as long as I've been here, 23 years. That's just something to consider. That's my two cents, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Hello, my name is Desiree Bruce. I'm currently residing at 116 Bridle Trail Lane. My mother spoke, Karen Bruce. I am living in the home that she inherited from my grandfather when he passed. He built the home in 2004, he came here for the quiet. I don't know how familiar you guys, familiar you all are with Northern Virginia. I moved here from Manassas. I have two young daughters, I have a three-and-a-half-year-old and a little one that'll be two on Monday. I had to get them out of Manassas. I had to. I know that the Renaissance Fair and the venue and everything, again, I'm young. I'm not like spring chicken or anything, but I'm not old. I love a good Ren Fair, I do. I love it, but not where it's going to be, in the Nimbys. But, you know, I think it's appropriate for a commercial lot, not for people's backyards. Again, I'm coming from Manassas, I was thrilled to move here for the peace. I mean, in Manassas, you've got a data center coming up here, and a shopping center coming up there, and condos back here. And no one gets permission, no one gets a say. So I was thrilled to move myself and my girls out here for peace, for quiet. Where they could grow up, you know, with that peace and quiet as well. I don't want them growing up in Manassas, where there's hustle and bustle. And I know that this isn't saying that Madison is going to turn into Manassas, but it's, I just don't want the crazy for them. I don't want traffic, I want my girls to be able to play outside. I don't want to worry about the kind of people that it may bring. And just some food for thought, at my townhouse in Manassas, I live 4.4 miles from Jiffy Lube Live. 4.4 miles. My husband and I didn't get to go to the Dan and Shay concert, because again, we have little kids. But we danced to our wedding song in our driveway, because I could hear every word. Our pictures would rattle on the walls, 4.4 miles away. This is in everyone's backyard, not everyone, but you know, the, this speaks volumes. Everyone here coming to tell you that this is going to be a problem in their daily lives. And to also speak to the resources for the county, the blackout, you know, essentially last week with all the power outages, one of the trees fell out our neighbors onto the power line, and it was smoking. We called 911. Guess how long it took? They didn't show up. They didn't come, at all. So if you think that they're going to be able to help your fellow neighbors or yourselves, when now they'll have an extra layer of event venue and problems, that's a concern. Because this was a tree backing up to all the vegetation, everything around the creek, that could have caught all of our houses on fire, and no one even responded. Food for thought, thank you so much.
Further public comment?
My name is Mike Ross, I live on Riding Trail Lane. You can see the cul-de-sac up there, her sign right there is covering my house. I appreciate the noise study that she did, it's not accurate. But I can tell you from where my house sits right there, I can hear geese landing at farm. So, that sound study is not right. None of my neighbors want this, nobody in Madison County wants this, please take that into consideration. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
My name's Cindy Herndon, my husband and I own a home here in Madison, we've been here 16 years. I was in the Navy for 26 years, and we had to move all over the place. I didn't, this, we are breaking records every day, because I find living at home that we've been able to be in for 16 years. And it was very, I was very thankful to be able to move back here and be here. My parents, who lived in Madison County for many years. My husband's parents lived in Orange County and Barbasille. They've all passed, and guess what, we're still here. Because we didn't just leave once they passed, we decided we really liked Madison, even though we grew up in Orange County. I've never been to one of these meetings, I'm ashamed to say, that I've never been to one of these meetings. I appreciate everyone that's here, I appreciate you all, but I don't appreciate the comments that have been made. Some were probably warranted, some not. But this will not be my last meeting, and I'm going to get more involved. And I thank you for your time, and I hope that you will deny this petition for this event. I, this is why we moved here, because we've lived in these areas that held these events. And I live five miles from where I worked at a veterinary hospital, it would take me sometimes 45 minutes to an hour to drive that five miles to get to work. Because there would be an event going on somewhere that the traffic would be just jammed up on these little roads of Chesapeake. So I've lived in a small community outside of a big city, because we were tried, we tried to live and raise our children in Chesapeake. And, you know, we started out in Virginia Beach, on a small area that grew fast. You know, this is why we're here, and I just, I need to be more involved. Thank you.
Any further public comment? Yes, ma'am.
My name is Carolyn Wall, and I actually live in Melbourne. I moved here in January of 19, and I came out of suburb of Denver. And not only my son really wanted me closer, but I was sick and tired of a big city. I moved here for the neighborhood, the quiet. And one of the reasons I built in Melbourne where I did is I knew what was around me. You know, I had driven in other parts of the state, driving down the highway, and all of a sudden there's a Ryan home development in the middle of nowhere. So that was my big concern about where I built. My main concern is traffic. And I was already concerned about what's been approved on Fishback. And if you've driven down Fishback recently, I think it's Fox Hollow, at the bottom of the dip there, there's already red dirt where there's been water on the road with all the rains we've had. Fishback and Oak Park, it is a dangerous intersection. If you go just through that, which is closer to where this is, there's a curve. It's, I mean, and if you start adding that many more car trips on there, it's just going to create a lot of serious problems for us. I also kind of question the metering of in and out. I heard this lady speak about metering people in, but what about metering them out? I have another concern with alcohol. She mentioned that she's going to have local wineries, and they have their licenses and their staffs. I have a son that works part-time for one of a large winery in the area. And he's worked for a couple of different ones, and their staff always, don't always follow the rules. They'll kind of turn to blind eyes, so I would be concerned about the increase possible of alcohol. And then the only other thing is this hill pad. Is that going to, is that going to be restricted? Is that going to be for emergency use only? I was discussing this with my son today, because I said I was coming to the hearing. And he's involved with the Orange County Fair, and he goes, why do they have a hill pad? He goes, if we have an emergency and had to call in a helicopter, we would have them land in field. So down the road, is there going to be other uses of that hill pad? Or is it strictly going to be emergency? I'm not so concerned about a helicopter coming in for an emergency, but say you decide, well, we're going to have helicopter flights, you know, or whatever. I think that's a possible concern down the road. So anyway, I appreciate your time and allowing me to speak this evening, and I hope that you turn this down, because even though I don't live immediately adjacent to this, it will impact all of us that live in the area. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Any further public comment at this time? Any further public comment? We have some online? You, okay. You're public, okay.
I have two things. One, as the IT Director, Tracy Gardner, our economic development and tourism person, is here online. If you would like to make a comment, she's free to do so whenever she pleases. And now, Allen Berry, 1171 Oak Park Road. I will reiterate some of what has been said here tonight in just a second. I kind of am on the fence right now about this development. I've lived here all my life, we have absolutely nothing to do in this county. Right now, as a 29-year-old, we can basically drink, or we can go hiking. That's about it. It would be nice if we had other options available to us. I really hate having to go to Rutgersville, Charlottesville, or Culpeper to do anything, but that's just, that's Madison County right now. I will reiterate that, as has been stated previously, the light at Fishback is an abomination. It is a travesty, and I'm sure VDOT will eventually get around to doing something about it, because they're very efficient and effective at what they do. I live at the corner of Oak Park, where Carpenter's Mill and O'Neill's meet, Oak Park Road. That intersection has a history of some bad accidents. They have landed in my yard a few times. They have landed in the cornfield to the farms adjacent to us. I would just ask people to be careful. I would like to have VDOT make some determinations on what this road can handle before I go one way or the other on it. But I just want people to be safe here. I would appreciate some kind of development coming into Madison County, but I'm still on the fence about it. I want the hard numbers before I make a decision on it. That's my public comment.
Thank you, sir. All right, we have Tracy online, does she want to make a comment? Not yet, okay. Yes, sir, come on up.
Hello, my name is Roman, I've never gone to one of these meetings before. I'm 25 years old, so that should give you an idea of, that this is important enough, that young people are showing up, and they do have opinions about it. I've lived in Madison my entire life, I know it like the back of my hand. I know everybody, everybody knows me, and my family. There's two things that concern me, the first is that this lady's involvement with the Economic Council. The fact that she has been in a position in Madison County, not from Madison County, and the fact that she all of a sudden is part of a committee right before some development happens, that doesn't seem to me that this is like a trustworthy, or a, this is not somebody that we want to be giving the keys to the castle. So I think that we really need to look into the events of how and when that this lady got approved to all this stuff. Seems to me fishy that somebody's all of a sudden in council and has so much at stake. I mean, there's clearly something going on here. This, my other two concerns are that, this is off 15. There's two things on 15, both cattle markets, and hayfields, cornfields, and beef. Cows get on the road, every cattle trailer in Madison does not have working lights or brakes. Everybody knows this. It's okay. But people from out of town do not know this, they're going to hit a cow. And if you've ever talked to a farmer, ask them about how insurance goes when that's involved. It's a hell. Secondly, I mean, this is a terrible spot. If you look at where the lines are drawn, I mean, the idea that you're going to limit noise, and you're going to have the boundaries right at the edge of the tree line, everybody can tell it's not going to work. In addition, everybody's mentioned traffic concerns, but nobody's mentioned specifics. If you go down Oak Park, you know, there's a turn on Beating Town Road. Everybody that's drunk has flown off of it. I myself, I grew up on Ruth Road, there's a stop sign between Ruth Road and Frith Road. When they installed Balltop, somebody's been creaming that stop sign about every couple of months, they have to put a new one in. The people are drunk, everybody knows this. The people that are from Madison, they might be 80 years old, probably going to be fine. People from out of town, they don't know the curves, they're going to run over that stuff. You're going to need more police, you're going to need more infrastructure, you're going to need more lights. The intersection at Oak Park and where you come off of MWP, that's a bad turn. Coming off of 15, there's no visibility from the orange direction. There's going to be cows getting on the road. It's going to put... There's gonna be cows getting on the road. Um, it's gonna put people in danger. It's gonna put the cows in danger. It's gonna stress them out. You know, it's a hundred degrees out. They gotta sit in the trailer extra long to get to the market. It's not good. But again, I reiterate the actions of somebody coming onto a committee and then having money to gain from it, this is not good. Um, I'd like to make one final statement before I go. Um, I see most everybody up here is pretty old, except for maybe James. Look, look, what I see, look, I'm, I'm twenty-five years old. I drive over a hundred miles every day for work. I don't get paid a lot. I'm in construction, clearly you can see by the shirt. Um, many of you have paid off homes. Many of you have grown children or children that grew up in a different school system. I went through Madison all twelve years. Um, please remember, vote as if this is affecting your own children, because it is. It's affecting everybody else's children, not just the, I'll probably never be able to afford a house in my lifetime unless I get one from my parents. This will drive the property values up. They're already sky high. Um, a lot of old people are getting pushed out. You know, this happens as time goes on, but please vote as if your own family is being affected. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further public comment? Is Tracy still online?
I am, but I was following the rules.
Okay, thank you. Any further public comment? All right, thank you then. All right, that was the last case on tonight's workshop. We do have, uh, informational correspondence, some other business that we'll be looking at. Um, in fact, since it's almost nine thirty, if those of you who were here only for this case would like to leave now, we'll give you a few minutes. If you'd like to stay and observe the rest of what we're doing, that would be fine also. So we'll, we'll kinda take about five minutes maybe. Okay, I think we've got most of the traffic out now, so if, if the rest of us will get back to work here. If we can get Nathan to come back down. Hey, old man, you ready to start? You ready? Okay, everybody ready? Okay. All right. I, I think Alan is...
Do you want, Mr. Chairman, do you want me to push through, uh, are you looking to pick up, sir, from informational correspondence from that point?
Uh, yeah, but I was thinking, no, here, here he is now.
All right, cause a lot of those are just gonna be upcoming workshops.
Yeah, yeah. We just run through those quickly and then we do have that item about the, uh, assigning the, Standing Committee to do some study there. Okay. Thank you, Alan. If you're ready to quickly take us through our upcoming, upcoming public hearings and workshops.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, happy to do so. All right, so, um, upcoming for a second workout, or workshop, my brain's already on tomorrow.
You had it right.
There you go. For a second workshop would be, uh, Ms. Alamu, who has the multiple short-term rentals in Banquo. So further discussion on that upcoming. We have, uh, two public hearings coming up in two weeks. So we've got Polly of the Blue Ridge, so, uh, Angor's Camper and the Madison Hills Events, so we'll look forward to that. Um, we will have a, a third workshop coming up for, um, development impact, for potential discussion. And also we will revisit the livestock on lots smaller than two acres in the R1 zoning district. Uh, we have three applications that are tabled at the moment. Uh, Mr. Esch with his zoning text amendment to, um, for the density proposed changes in R3. Uh, we have Mr. Lipscomb's application is currently tabled for the, uh, event venue on Hoover Road. Uh, however, my understanding is, is that he has now, um, had his engineering work done and has submitted his, uh, packet to the Health Department to remedy outstanding violations. And so I do anticipate that we will have his case coming probably next month. Uh, Mr. Fuke's application is still tabled pending the outcome of the livestock on lots less than two acres. Uh, we do not have any cases scheduled to go before preliminary development at this time. Uh, I am aware softly of two that may be coming, so I do anticipate more information on that, uh, in the future. That's all I have for upcoming. Uh, Mr. Chairman, do you have other items?
Yeah, the only other item we have, we've, we have been, uh, actually, there's been some discussion about this development impact. Jim's done a huge amount of work on that. And, uh, we have some legal advice on that as well. And if you have looked at that in the, uh, on the county website. I think what we need to do here is, we have, uh, the Business Industrial and Sign Committee chaired by Mike Snyder. Uh, I think it's probably time to go ahead and, uh, assign that for a study by that committee. And, uh, we'll get started on that. Fortunately, Jim is on that committee as well, so he's got the background that he's prepared. And it's, uh, hopefully we can get started on that. And Mike, I'll let you try to work out some scheduling.
Do we have a kind of a timeline on this?
Can we get some guidance on that? Are we looking at a timeline on that or just? Just get it started and, uh, see what it's gonna look like. I think we've all pretty much got the idea of why we want to look at this, but whether or not it can work, uh, where Jim's working on it or whether it's gonna have to be adjusted some, I'm not sure. It should be lots of fun. Thank you. All right, uh, you have a comment? Okay.
I do, just on that note. So I, I've been the Chair of the, uh, Sub-Committee on the agricultural, something I should probably know.
Agriculture, Conservation and Residence.
Yes, sir. I think the fact that I don't know what it is is a good sign as to where I'm at with it. I've done a terrible job. I've let you all down. I'm sorry. Uh, we have, we do have an item, uh, that we're working on in regards to slopes, uh, building slopes and developments. We are going to meet on August sixth at five thirty and we'll be getting some information out on that. But as part of that, I am really good at avoiding not scheduling another meeting or doing work that I don't really wanna do, but I am good at participating on that, uh, nature. Again, I'm sorry, but I have talked Zach Whitman into taking over, chairing that committee and, uh, I will be sure to show up whenever he tells me to, if that's okay. I don't know if there's, you know, some sort of formal, you know, process that needs to happen.
More of a assignment. Thank you, Zach.
There you go. Thank you, Zach.
Thank you, Zach. Thank you. Okay, that, uh, I think you were in pretty good shape on that as far as gathering information, so you should be relatively close to completion, I guess.
We are. Over the last year and a half, made really, really some good documents, uh, gotten together. Um, and we are pretty much to the stage of, um, looking at a proposed zoning ordinance for that subject, uh, which we will be doing on the, uh, August sixth at five thirty. Like I said, more information to come.
And Mike, I don't think a year and a half is a good, a good time on yours.
Well, that's why I asked.
Yeah. Thank you. And we'll, I'll put Zach's name on the, on the list for that one.
Mr. Chairman, I've got...
Yes, sir.
I've got a question for clarification. I don't know if you'd call it a rural legend rather than an urban legend, but we heard several comments about a two-hundred-unit subdivision has been approved. Did I miss that meeting?
No, I don't think so.
So that there hasn't been one approved?
Well, actually, I've heard it's, it's as large as a thousand.
Oh, a thousand. Okay, I stand corrected. Thank you, Roman.
Right, it, it, it tends to vary, so.
So nothing has been approved?
Uh, well, there's already zoned areas on that road that are gonna be developed, I think. Alan, am I incorrect? Are we, are we actually looking at two hundred apartments there?
I do not have a single open application for, uh, development subdivision site plan with the exception of the, um, the gravel entry that's there for the storage units on Fishback at the corner. There's an active site planned for that to go, but I have no other applications on my desk.
Yeah, we're just as good at generating rumors as any other place in the country.
What up yourself?
Okay, any other questions, comments? Is there any public comment on other, other items? Thank you, ma'am. And I wanna thank you for attending our meeting.
Now that all the scary people left, um, my name's Mary Woodward and I am a resident of Madison and I also own a small business in Madison. Um, the only thing that I wanna say is with all of this going on, I just want everyone to be kind. That's all I ask. Molly is a human, so let's treat her as such. And she texted me last night and said that she had an incident in her residence and that people had put up trail cameras on her property and the Sheriff's Department wouldn't even come out and help her.
They did help.
That, they did eventually come, yes, after several phone calls. That's not the Madison County that I wanna be living in. I wanna live in a community that everyone supports everyone, whether you agree with what she's doing or not. It's just, you just need to be kind and just treat people like humans. So that's all I'm gonna say. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, ma'am. Any other public comment? We're off to a good start. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Move to adjourn.
Second. Questions been made and seconded. All in favor of adjourning, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.